Good evening. We'll call the Select Board meeting to order at 6:32 PM. We'll start with discussion regarding town response to COVID-19. I'm guessing we'll spend a little time on this, so we may come back to it after our joint meetings or after the public hearing if we have time. So as of late, obviously, there's been a lot of increase in case counts with, you know, post-holidays here and Omicron and all the other factors involved. I believe Brian provided the weekly counts for Irving, and I think over the last three weeks, it was 11, 13, and then 23 as of Sunday. And then we have another five today, if I read that right, four or five to add to that?
Yep.
And those are all new cases? So those counts keep increasing. That being said, I think it's worth discussing, do we want to make any changes to our current protocols for the town buildings and/or any other considerations a lot of our neighbor communities have already? And I think in a lot of cases, they were seeing escalations well before we were in But what your thoughts are?
So initially, my thing, and still are, my thoughts are, in town-owned buildings, we should be looking at a mask mandate at a minimum. So I'm not sure, you know, I don't think we have to go back to remote or in getting that far out right now, but something as simple as a mask mandate inside of all, as you can see, there's no mandate now, and everybody's wearing one. So I don't think it would be that much of a change, but it's just for those few that typically wouldn't wear one, asking them to wear one in a town building.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page. I think we should go to a full mask mandate for any town buildings and our remote meetings or meetings like this one, that we have the equipment available for those folks who may come in and don't have the proper equipment to wear, and that we provide that. And I'd go the extra step in saying that all of our meetings are going to be mandated on the e-wear mask. I don't want to leave any doubt for people or any question to, any reason to question, well, you didn't say it was, so here I am. But that's my feeling for now.
I agree with both of you, and I think maybe we should be more explicit about it, but if it's in a town building, it's whatever is happening there. I guess my only question and where I wasn't leaning, at least, was if you're in your own private space, if you have an office, or if you're in a vehicle alone, I don't know that I'm as concerned until you are with another person or if you're in shared spaces. And I don't know your thoughts.
The, I would say that if you're in shared spaces inside of any of the town buildings, masks would still be. Now, I don't know enough about the air filtration systems that we've installed, the turnaround time on how quickly that gets ventilated through and gives you the safety that we're looking for. Maybe you know the specs on that, I'm not sure. You know, should somebody be in your office with you, you have a mask on, they leave, is there a timeframe that says, okay, they're gone, I can take my mask off, I'm working in my office by myself for the rest of the day? Is it three minutes? Is it three hours? Because it doesn't make a lot of sense to have somebody be in your office for an hour during a meeting, they walk out the door, and you rip your mask off, and you sit there 30 seconds later. So just what that turnaround time looks like. As far as vehicles, I would defer to the department heads, they know how often they're in vehicles with other people, how often they're in them solo. I think if they're in them solo, and that's going to be their vehicle for the day, and it's not going to be two people for this half hour, me alone, two people again for another hour, if it's just going to be them for the day, out for their, they start their day, they're taking their vehicle, there's no need for a mask. But if it's going to be in and out, two people, three people, two people, one person, you know, I would say still wear that mask.
And I think we should reaffirm, you know, enhanced cleaning, especially the vehicles, you know, and on a daily basis or between users, especially if we're going to do that just to. I know some of our department heads are in the audience, they don't see any concerns raised. Is that in agreement with what we're saying or any?
Very happy with that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
We're not by ourselves anyways, okay, unless we have somebody with us, which then it's always being cleaned and their mask ready, and we have the ventilation that Brian supplies with that plug into our outlets. So in a vehicle, I'd say unless two officers are in there, we're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Same with highway vehicles, we have those plugged in also.
Brian, in terms of maybe general information from the manufacturer on the units that we've purchased for the different buildings, especially the standalone ones where it's not part of the HVAC, any, do you have any data on air change frequency, things like that?
It's dependent on the square footage of the room. It's filtering, so every one of the units that has been assigned to an office space or to a vehicle was based on the square footage, and we have rates for turnover every 15 to 30 minutes.
Yeah, okay.
So everybody has a user guide that went with their equipment, and if it's been misplaced in the last few months, I can send that back out to everybody. We kept that in file.
So a question, is this device in each of the offices in the Town Hall?
So buildings like this and the library have central HVAC systems that run year-round, so they're heating and cooling.
Okay.
And so we retrofitted those filtration systems with UV filters, and facilities like Town Hall and the police station, the fire station, excuse me, the fire station also has a UV filter in the mini-split. The systems at Town Hall and the police station are just for cooling, and so for, in preparation of the heating season, we purchased room filtrations for each of the offices. So there's large ones for the hallways, and then there's in meeting rooms, and then there's smaller ones for each of the offices.
Okay.
And then each of the vehicles, as the staff was saying, there's a filtration system that plugs into the AC chater.
Okay. I don't want to rush the topic, so we can come back to it after the public hearing. I know we're running a little long, so it sounds like we're close to maybe one decision, but there's a lot there, so if you're all okay, we'll come back to it.
Sure.
Okay. So the time is 6:40, so I'm going to call the public hearing regarding the layouts of Care Drive, Highland Avenue, Pleasant Street, and Public Works Boulevard to order. So we have some proposals to formally adopt road layouts regarding these four roads. In some cases, they weren't done, in some cases, we're making some slight changes to the meets and bounds of those said roads. At a high level, mending the layout of Care Drive, and this is extending it in a westerly direction, basically approximately to the end of the parcel. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going somewhat from memory, but that's correct. In terms of Public Works Boulevard, it was never adopted as a public way, so this is the meets and bounds of the road as it is now, looping around our facilities. Let me pull up the layout real quick, because I think it's not quite all the way around.
Is it, or is it, it stops, correct?
I need to pull it up.
Yeah, so when it goes down, it stays on the right-hand side of the building at the bottom of the driveway, and it goes back to where the fence opens up for people to go back and drop their leaves in the leaf pile, but nothing on the other side of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
And if anybody, I know Brian said it once, the layouts are up on the table over there, but specifically with Public Works, you would notice that the layout is maybe a foot or two in some areas wider than the pavement, and that's about it. I mean, it's not, if you look at some of these, the dotted line, I believe, is the current pavement, correct? So if you're looking at it, the dotted line over there is the current paved roadway, and then the solid line next to that is the layout of that road that it lies within.
And we'll take any questions on these in a moment, I just want to highlight what the four are. So that's Public Works Boulevard, Highland Avenue, it's a slight adjustment to the current meets and bounds to align with what makes sense for the public utilities that are on that road and consistent with the road layout. There is some small change of property ownership in that. And then Pleasant Street, and Brian, you can help me with this one, but this is laying out Pleasant Street all the way from Moore to Prospect, and so there are some unnamed or different names that those sections of roadway have had over the years, and then this is formally naming that entire street, Pleasant Street, and laying it out formally on the record as a public way. At a very high level, so welcome any questions, if anyone has any, on any of the specific road layouts? Yes? If you could, if you could state your name, just for the record?
Yes, Deborah Reynolds.
Welcome.
I live on Highland Avenue, so I'm not exactly clear about that section or why it's happening.
I'm just blowing up my view of it here. Yeah, if you want to dive into the detail, Brian, it's primarily about that small box at the very end.
So the Highland Avenue layout is being adjusted for two reasons, or laid out for two reasons. One is that in the 1970s, when it was last surveyed and adopted at town meeting, there was a recording issue, so we're just trying to correct that. We're following all of the existing meets and bounds from Church Street to the top of what you know today. The only presented change would be the addition of 247 square feet, so it's a box about 15 feet by 16 and a half feet. It's on the property owned by Mr. Pollard. It's in response to a proposal by Mr. Pollard, there's a sewer structure that has been in existence on the corner of his property, so it would pull that sewer structure into the road layout, so it's fully under the town's control.
You need to be more careful.
Correct. Correct. That's the only adjustment to what residents on that road would know as Highland Avenue today.
Is there a consideration involved?
To my understanding, unless the agreement's been changed, the only consideration was the replacement of a monument that's missing.
What's the first one?
A monument that's missing? So as part of these road layouts, if there's monuments missing from the layout, we're going to restore those, and so those are all indicated on the map over there, and that was of, in the conversations between the board and Mr. Pollard, just to ensure that the replacement of the monuments was taken care of.
And I'm not exactly clear about the monuments, or we're talking about the, if you're coming up Highland Avenue, the right-hand side of the street, it looks like there's two of those little triangles, it was sort of hard to decipher on a small screen.
Right. If it's marked on there as a monument that's being replaced, then that's correct.
Okay, and how are those monuments determined?
The meets and bounds of the road layout from the 1970s.
Does it affect any other property?
I don't know what that means. All the other meets and bounds of Highland are as originally marked.
Okay, except that there are pins missing on that road?
I believe all of the missing monuments, any missing monuments that are detailed would be replaced as part of the, once the road is adopted, as part of the work.
Okay, was any other survey performed other than the actual road itself?
I don't follow the question. What do you mean by another survey?
Well, my property is right there, if what would be right now considered the end of the road. It's just a bit past my driveway, the end of my driveway. There's a pin missing at that corner.
So once, maybe I didn't explain it clearly, but if there was a monument that was cited in the 1970s layout, it's being restored, if it's missing, or if it's been buried or lost, that's being redone. The town paid for a survey of the road layout, part of that's a review of all the deeds along each of the properties for reference points, but if you're asking if there was any surveying of private property, no.
Just to take that one step further, the survey looks at the private property in how it abuts to the road layout and uses all of the 1970 layout to ensure that we're maintaining the same exact layout with the only addition of the agreed-upon extension of the road by 15 feet or so. So no other change that would affect any other abutter other than, I believe it's Mr. Pollard's land at the end.
I don't specifically know exactly where your property is in reference to the road layout, but there is notes on the survey that the top of some of these have been broken flush with the ground, or some are buried slightly, so for the monuments that they did find that are not missing, but may have not have been visible.
And when does that been happen?
I believe that work would be done post-adoption at town meeting, because this will go to the voters to be adopted. So until that adoption happens, we can't make changes, so we would do that work once if the voters supported adopting these layouts as presented.
Can I ask, is there any personal concern that you have with your property?
Yes, there is a personal concern.
And what is that?
Well, there's been a drift of property that's been in dispute, as far as I'm concerned, between the Pollards and myself, so that's why I'm concerned about the placement of
And could you?
At the corner, well, I had a fence and trees in this area, which were taken down by the Pollards several years ago, and now there are other plantings in there. I had a lot of plantings, I don't know exactly what happened to them, and now there's an invasive tree that's been planted in there that's extending over my driveway. I understand the property.
And have you addressed that with Mr. Pollard?
Well, we never came to an agreement. I came home from work one evening, and my fence had been taken down, was left in the road, and then they proceeded to cut down my trees.
The 15 feet at the end of Highland as shown on that plan, is that in any of the area that you're concerned with your neighbor on? I'm not sure we have a way to look at this, I think we'd need to see a property map with a better overlay of the private parcels to understand your concern further and how that extension of the street applies or affects that. The majority portion, obviously, is the road as it was already laid out, so that's no change. I don't know if either of you have any thoughts without understanding it further?
No, I was looking, I blew up the map, and my concern was the same, is that extending the road, based on what I see here, is in a, the layout goes in a straight line continuing with the current road layout, an additional 15 feet. It doesn't widen, it doesn't do anything other than straight ahead, so I wouldn't know, this doesn't delineate any of the other private properties and how far in, or, you know, it doesn't have those lines on this map, so I wouldn't be able to cross-reference those by looking at it. It doesn't have all the other parcels listed out, because our survey didn't show any other notation to have to put that on there, other than the additional 15 feet based on what the surveyor saw. So we don't have any other information.
But you mentioned that, that the other property was looked at as far as the deeds.
Well, to know where the pin should have been, if there was one that was broken and he couldn't find it, she, he or she, I'm not sure who the surveyor was, that they would go through and say, this is where there should have been a pin that I was unable to find, let's go back out again, find where that is, let's do some digging, and they would find that they were broken or they were sunken down. If they were missing, they would go through and find out, based on mapping it out, exactly where it should have been, and put something temporary to say, that's where the pin should be, but it was broken or, you know, removed. So these layouts are the exact same as 1970, except for the additional 15-foot in a straight line continuing on. So unless your property wraps around the roadway, and I'm not sure, because I don't have your property layout, your property would have to come up, cross over the road, and get in behind the road layout in order to, for this to be part of that. So I'm not sure, since I don't have that information.
The thing is, if there are no markers, there are those monuments, supposedly they're going to be replaced.
Correct. They don't have to mark them now, because that work wouldn't be done, so they can, they have, when they do the survey, they do it all on paper, so they know exactly what the meets and bounds are based off of paper. There's no need to put a marker in now that has to go through a winter to then have to get voted on in the spring and then wait for the work to be done. Those will be marked out prior to the actual work being done, but on paper, they're all there, and they highlight exactly where they will be in the future.
Well, I understand that, but visually, I cannot see what is being, you know, talked about. I mean, do I have to get out there with a tape measure, or what?
We can do some more research. Brian, one question, on this layout, there are two solid lines that are thinner, kind of going left and right, right near the 15-foot, I mean, you might be able to see it.
Property lines.
Those are the property lines of the Pollard property, is that correct?
That's my understanding correct, based on the available data.
We have larger prints over there on that table?
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, so though.
Yeah, I'm standing over there next to it, looking at it, I'm not exactly, I was told that there was going to be an actual, you know, handout, because.
You can have a printed copy, we can provide that.
The, so the only, basically, the only private property markers are the ones that are relative to the extension of the road, the 15 feet, and so there are two.
Oh, yes, I understand all that.
Okay.
But my deed says that it doesn't jump across the road to the drill hole that's missing, supposedly taken away, you know, one winter with a plow, but that it goes to the road.
So just to be very, yeah, go ahead. Just to be very clear, that oftentimes, a road layout is not the same as the paved surface. So in almost every single instance in town, we have a road layout that could be much wider than the actual paved surface, and so that's.
I'm just trying to make sure that nothing else is going to be affected, because as I said, as far as I'm concerned, that piece of property is mine and not the Pollard's. They've never had it surveyed, that I'm aware of.
I'd be happy to look at it.
Re-surveyed.
Yeah.
When, I think, to your point as well, it might be best to actually look at the print and understand where you're referring to in reference to that 15-foot piece. Would you mind, one of the select board coming up with you and looking at it on that larger print over there?
No, I really, you know, I can't tell by looking at it.
Thank you, Scott.
So according to the survey, this would be the property line, and I'm assuming this is your property here?
No.
Along, as you go along Highland, coming up from Church, you're up here. So the 1970 layout shows this is the property line in respect to this, what should be a marker, and this marker, which was broken, with a, top was broken flush to the ground. And I believe, Brian, you said the triangles are the missing, but that should be there or would be an additional?
There should be a key at the bottom of that.
That's the unmonumented bound.
Unmonumented, so they didn't find one, but they know that based on the 1970 records, that there should be one right there, which would delineate the end of the town surveyed land. So extending it out here is still not approaching in on what it showed the survey as the end of your property. It actually starts beyond the end. This would be the, whoever owns this over here, this is the end of the personal property belonging to the Pollards from this direct line, so both of them are there, as per the survey that we found, so. But I just want to make sure I showed you, so.
Oh, no, I understand exactly what you're talking about. I'm just trying to.
So your dispute is saying that this line from 1970 is incorrect?
Well, I'm saying is that I don't, you know, because there's nothing, and I understand why there isn't, why there's nothing, when there's nothing here, I can't tell what's happening here, you know, where exactly on the road this is. There were, you know, the previous owner to all the property on the road, just pretty much quoting from him, pretty much did what I wanted to up there, and so now, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there's a dispute going on as to what this, what this drift determines, because it takes, you know, footage away from my property.
Yes. I'll respond to it, but I want to make sure that I can get back down there.
So the response I was, wanted to give you was that understandably, over decades, use of land might differ from actual surveyed land and lines. Oftentimes, you'll find neighbors that have had a fence up or had a building put up that was a little too close or not too close, or they planted some flowers that may or may not have been on their property line or on somebody else's, and it was just, if it wasn't an issue, it wasn't an issue. But this survey is the same as it was in 1970, without any change other than the extension.
If you would, is the section of the extension part of the contested area as?
If I heard what she was saying correctly, is this line.
The right one?
The right-hand side, her property is here, but without having reference of the full parcel and knowing how far from what. full parcel, and knowing how far from what she states her property line ends to what the layout says it ends, she's disputing that her land may be up here, which puts her in a butter to that 15.
Or a partial owner potentially, or something. Okay, got it. So I guess one possible avenue is for us to have some further surveying and/or title deed search done to verify the, I will say, the approximately 247 square feet parcel that the town is proposing to extend the road layout into. That's an option to, just to verify that we are considering the appropriate landowner in that transaction.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we would propose to do is have, you know, we'll work with our resources to have a property search done and verify the meets of the, and the ownership of the 247 square feet shown as an extension here of the current layout, and validate that that ownership is correct to be the Pollards', and we'll complete that before we take any further action on adopting a change to this roadway.
I would appreciate it, then, it would settle things, because, you know, surveyors charge a lot of money, and they won't just do one property line, they want to do the whole parcel, and oftentimes, they're just relying on past surveys, which may or may not be correct. So, I mean, they want thousands of dollars to do a survey.
Completely understand. We've also incurred those kind of costs to the taxpayers to generate these layouts, so...
Because, you know, there's things that I want to do on my property, so I need to know where an actual property line is.
And we want to be sure that we are engaging, obviously, all the abutters' concerns with any changes we're making. In terms of the change, it's that 247 square feet, and we want to ensure that we're discussing, you know, that change with all of the appropriate property owners. Any private dispute about a private, you know, shared line, we cannot...
But, you know, where, I mean, that line, as far as, you know, in my mind, and what the property looks like right now, you know, I can't tell.
Understood. Did you have a clarifying question?
You adjust it.
Okay. So we will go back and work with our team and our surveyor to validate the ownership of that parcel in question for the extension of Highland Ave, and then we will put it on a future agenda once we have that clarification. We can also reach out to you directly and let you know when we have those answers, or what we've, our records have found.
I was just gonna ask, if you wouldn't mind, please leaving your contact information with Mariah at that desk, just so we can follow up with you.
Excellent.
And I would just ask if we are going to engage another surveyor, or even the same one, for the ease of the visual, you know, satisfaction or completion of that, to be able to drop a temporary, you know, rod, marker, even a, you know, a pin that's flush with the ground with a, you know, a pink ribbon on it, just to say, like, this is where the...
Or staked or something, yeah.
Yeah, here's the, here's the corner of the property, and here's the, it's marked as a triangle, here's the monument that is missing, that needs to go in sometime next year, and there's the difference of the two. Couple of simple pins with a little flag on it that says visually, here's what we're talking about, and it's a matter of just a few feet.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm, I guess, aggressive, but, but, in order to get this clarified, the four corners, your, the pins you're talking about on that, taking the land, there's going to be another one to satisfy what she's asking, is where the land goes along, my land goes along Highland Ave, then it meets her land, and it jogs back up, so there's got to be another, you see on the plan there, it's not going to be a pin, but there, but there should be a pin, if not, it's going to be a false boundary line.
And that's what I was just saying, is that fifth one down that shows the corner, where the two properties meet along Highland, and so we know that...
There's, I think, four and a half feet that goes back down the road, it cuts back, if you don't put that in, it's going to give a false boundary line.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's what I was, so you're saying the angle at which it goes?
Yep. And I do have a surveyor on contract, but it's tough to get him out. I don't know when, ah, when he's going to be out, it could be this month, it could be June, but I hope, when I spend the money for it, that it is agreed upon, not argued over.
Mr. Pollard, and O'Brien, and you, and then the office has had communication, so if our surveyor, or, you know, when we're doing title search, property search, needs to contact your surveyor, we'll get in contact with you.
They already indicated how far that man was, or they already know where the end of the road is, because that's how they come up with that plan, so it's pretty much just, I think it might be just cut and dry, put those pins in, because they already determined the end of the road.
Well, as Scott said, we'll likely try to put some temporary markers in to note where the extension will be from the current meets and bounds of the layout, and then we'll reconvene and discuss any further concerns.
Peace on Highland Ave.
Pardon?
It'd be nice to get peace on Highland Ave.
Agreed. We'd like to get the layout recorded and set, so that it's known for now and on. Any other questions on the road layout on Highland Ave? Okay. Questions on the layouts of the other three, Public Works, Pleasant, or Care Drive? Yes, sir.
I live at 58 River Road, what is going to be Public Works, or Public Works Boulevard?
Yes.
In your plan, it shows that you own, or the town owns, part of that corner. Is that true, or...
I'm just opening the layout here.
It appears it is, Book 5544, page 220, 212, you mean, right on that corner, the triangle piece at the end of the, right where the driveway approaches.
Okay, so when we bought the house last year, in our plan, it shows that we own all that.
When, when you say that corner, are you referring to the area that Public Works Boulevard covers?
No.
The road, the road is the dotted lines, and then there's a square, or a triangle, that abuts our property, and it says that the town, it's the town's property.
Are you following, because I'm not?
I'm saying this triangle right here, when they bought their home, when they had their, whatever, and I'm sure it wasn't a full survey, it was...
Oh, oh, okay, I see.
An appraisal, and somebody did an appraisal of what they assumed.
I see, thank you.
And they were informed at that time that that triangle was part of their property, and that they owned all the way up to the full town layout, where Public Works meets River Road.
Okay, I follow, thank you.
I think there's some, there's some larger frisetias and some other bushes in that area, right, yeah, so that, that section of that road.
Right, right. Visually, I know where it was, I wasn't, I wasn't reading the text in there accurately, thank you.
Got it.
Brian, I would just, I'm just thinking, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what would help us would be to see a copy of the meets and bounds that were included in your purchase of the property, that denote the property lines, and see if they contradict with the deeds shown on here, and I'm not putting you on the spot to say you have them here tonight, we can, you know, continue this to a future meeting and do that work offline, if that makes sense to you. I think that's probably the quickest way to come to a resolution, would be to look at what is shown on your property documents, and...
The road layout that you guys have, I don't think will affect that area too much. I just was under the assumption that it was our property, up until this road layout came about, and then all of a sudden, it was the town's property, and it's not clear where that line would be. Like, I have a platform with a gazebo on it, is that considered on town property? So, and I found one pin out behind the trees. I have this one, if I can...
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
So, so, I think it's okay, so there's two issues here, it sounds like there's the road layout issue, the road layout that's presented currently exists as a parcel that the town has owned since the 70s, so the meets and bounds that are presented, the hard, the dark bold line, is just following that parcel. That's a separate issue from what you're raising, which is a concern about a division line between that corner lot and the property that you purchased, and whether or not there is a division, correct? So, so I think if we could set up, and I'm probably going to ask you again if you could give your contact information to Mariah, if we could set up an appointment to go over that and meet you on site, and have a conversation about that, and we can pull up the documents you have, the documents the town has on record, and we can address that parcel issue, but I believe that's a separate issue from the layout, but I'm glad that you brought this to our attention.
I think you alluded to it, if, I guess the first question I would have, do you have any concerns with the road layout, which it sounded like you do not, and that's more the specifics of the public hearing, but would gladly work with you to take a look at the parcel and understand if there's a concern about that property separately.
I knew anything about that line until it showed where the road layout was, and then now we're trying to figure out where that whole line would be.
Yeah, our office will gladly work with you on trying to sort out where the concern is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or concerns for Care Drive, Public Works Boulevard, or Pleasant Street?
Sorry, one more question. Are you guys widening that road, wider than it is now? I'm pretty sure the dotted line and the solid line is a little bit wider, like that's going to push the guy road into our yard, no?
So, today, the dash line is representative of the blacktop surface approximately today. The dark line is the actual boundary of the roadway, so the town could extend anywhere within that space. Currently, we don't have any plans to make any changes to the current edges of blacktop. That is subject to change in the future, but not today. Okay. Seeing no other questions, any other comments or concerns from the board, I think at this point, we are continuing the discussion on the layout of Highland, but I didn't hear any concerns regarding the other three that would lend to a further review, a further hearing.
Correct.
I have no concerns.
Okay. A move that we close the public hearing on the road layouts of Pleasant Street, Public Works Boulevard, and the amended layout of Care Drive at 7:16 PM.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, in terms of Highland Ave, do I need to continue that to a specific date, or can it be TBD?
It'd be cleaner if we had a specific date.
Do you think we can, yeah, do you have a timeline you think that makes sense for the work we need to do?
I think we need at least two weeks.
So 24th?
Yes, please.
Okay. In terms of layout of Highland Ave, a move that we continue the public hearing at seven, I'm sorry, at 6:35 PM on January 24th. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone who attended for the public hearing. We are going to move into our joint meeting with the Finance Committee, and our first topic will be discussion regarding the Arch Street sewer forced main borrowing, and we have our treasurer with us, you're welcome to come on up to the table.
And you should have a guest joining you on the...
Yes.
Signing in.
And then, do we have anyone in queue on remote?
I don't see them yet. Mariah, do you know if they've...
We'll just give a moment to get David on the line here.
Oh, it looks like we've got, and we'll pull him up.
Hi, David, we can see you.
Good evening.
Welcome. So you have the select board here, as well as the Finance Committee, and obviously, our treasurer, who you've worked with this on, and I will give the floor to you, Jennifer, if you would, start us off, and...
Excellent.
I'm putting you on the spot, I know, but at a high level, it sounds like there's been some discussion about how we complete the borrowing for Arch Street, and some recommendations, and so please fill us in.
Sounds good.
So we had a meeting with David and Brian, and we had discussed the best avenues to go ahead on whether to borrow, or how much to borrow for the sewer loan, and David kindly drew up some estimates of about four different scenarios, so we wanted to go ahead and take it away, David.
Thank you, Jen. Through you, Mr. ...
Yes, sir.
As Jen and I've been working with her and Brian on the, and so far, the town has undertaken some temporary financing for the full $1,500, but more recently, I have prepared some, of what a permanent financing of a project would look like, and one option is to have the town issue 1.57 million in general obligation bonds that will be repaid over 20 years, and the first page, I don't know if you've got the analysis that I prepared, the first page of the analysis that I prepared is that is an estimate of the general obligation The second page shows a serial statehouse mode issue with the assumption that the town would use $1 million from available funds in order to pay down the debt to $570,000. The town would amortize that, would repay that over six years instead of 20, and the question that Jen and Brian raised is, if the town did use the funds, in the amount of $1 million, or whatever amount it would be, how much in the way of investment earnings would the town forego? And that's the third and fourth page, the third page, and, third page shows the, actually, the second and third page, show the loss of, under a couple of different coriums. The second page shows, assumes that if the, if the $1 million was going to be otherwise available for 20 years, you can see what the loss of investment income would look like. On the third page, you see, assuming the $1 million would only... On the third page, you see, assuming the $1 million would only otherwise be available for five years. Pages show a detailed analysis of the investment loss by using $1 million. Now, we made several changes on what rates would do over the coming years. But our conclusion was that, in fact, it would be more efficient to use the $1 million to pay down the debt if that's, especially where, given the fact that the town has those funds available. Maybe I should pause to allow Mr. Chairman to allow questions at this point.
Yeah, I think we're all trying to follow along, and it's a start, but I'm sure there's some questions. I'll open it up if anyone wants to start specifically. If I followed, page one is just a standard borrowing?
Yes. Just the general obligation bonds issued over 20 years.
And then, page two is the town providing $1 million of the liability in some sort of cash fund, and then borrowing the balance for 20 years. And the loss... Oh, I'm sorry.
Over six years. But the assumption is that the $1 million would otherwise be available for 20 years. So, that's why you see in that next, the column that is next to the right-hand column, that's the assumed investment loss by using the $1 million, assuming it would otherwise be available for 20 years.
So, the initial million plus the lost interest growth is estimated at 1.5 million of investment loss over the 20 years.
It's actually really half a million dollars, which is the way that this unfolds.
It's a half million in interest growth plus the initial million base, right? So, the whole one. Okay.
Yeah.
And then, page three is just...
Page three shows the truth that the $1 million would otherwise be available only for... I mean, you have to make some sort of base assumption of how long the $1 million is in your account in order to compare what we'll do.
I guess my opinion would be unless we ever pay it back, it's forever. Unless the town makes a plan to put the million back out of some other cash at some point, and then that'd be your endpoint. But that's just how I look at it.
Yeah. I think the question is how long would you use the $1 million otherwise? If you didn't use it for this, would you...
Oh.
Would you use it for something else, and when?
Given the savings nature of our town, I don't know if we'd ever use it. But if we have used it, so I won't say never.
And there are additional fees incurred also with if you were to borrow the full amount.
In terms of like originations and things like that, like smaller fees, okay.
And I know that we had discussed the possibility of getting a rating, and we had that conversation as well. And two of the concerns were that we have such a high tax-based concentration with First Light that I don't know if we would actually get the high rating, just because we have, you know, again, from one area, and also the fact that First Light isn't currently licensed. I don't know if that's a huge issue right now, but that was just another issue that had been raised.
So, those might be risk factors to getting a AAA rating? Okay.
Right. I think, in fact, I would count on creation being a rating weakness that could result in a lower rating than one might otherwise affect the financial and economic health of the town.
I did have one question. The rate that was used in these projections, were they based on an assumption of, say, a single A rating or a double A rating or... I assume... But we had to pick a number, a rate projection on what we think we would get if we were to go through the bonding and get a rating. That would be a factor in what percentage we would be able to borrow at. I'm just curious where this would fall.
For the general obligation bond, we assumed an A-plus rating.
A-plus, okay.
With insurance. Because, and that was based largely on the tax-based concentration, effective tax-based concentration on the rating.
And then, it looks like you chose around the middle of the road on the A-plus.
When you say in the middle of the road.
Well, it looks like the A-plus has a... For percent, that's not percentage. I stand corrected.
The overall cost would be around 2.9% at this point. For a 20-year issue. The rate on the serial note issues would actually be higher, estimated at 3.75%. But since the town is, the investment earnings on the town are actually less than that, we would count the cost of the investment earnings foregone as reducing the total amount of the cost of capital. We were saying that that would be about 2.65% overall with the use of the $1 million.
If I'm comparing the data in these charts accurately, the full borrowing total cost is about 2.1 million over the 20 years. And then, if we only borrowed, page two, page three, sorry, page two, we only borrowed $570,000 and we invested a million of cash to pay for this, the interest on the five-year note or six-year note plus the lost earnings and the initial investment were at 2.16 million? It's actually slightly higher? Am I reading that correctly?
That's actually... Yeah, I think that probably would make sense with page four. I'm sorry, page three shows that a little bit more accurately, probably more like $500,000.
But, well, it'd be 1.7, just for apples to apples, right? Because there's the million initial, it's not shown in that one for some reason in the total.
Yeah.
1.7, right?
For the 20-year, assuming the 20-year, one wouldn't include the $1 million coming out at the end. So, it really is only 1.1 million dollars. The investment loss columns I'm showing in and out that... So, you see the, in 2042, it's actually only $26,000 in loss. This is to the present value effect on the cost of capital.
So, I have a follow-up question. So, I'm a little confused because I think your first page that shows a full 1.5 million 20-year bond, it shows a cost of about 541,000 in interest, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so, then your projections are, and just to be clear, the next one shows about 1 point, about 650,000, and that is inclusive of investment loss, correct?
No, the 650 actually...
Is just interest?
It's just principal and interest. It actually went to the comparable, we would actually reduce the investment loss by $1 million. So, the actual cost is more in the range of, per cost is about 1.1 rather than 2.1. And I apologize for the confusion here. But the column of the investment is designed to show the effect on present value. And actually, fiscal '42 actually overstates the impact by $1 million. So, that is a little bit confusing.
The, did you follow that? Yeah. So, I'm thinking the 77 plus the 511 gets you to the equivalent interest carrying cost?
Right.
Which is what you were looking for, right?
Right.
So, we're talking about 688, 588?
588, 589.
Over 20 years. Versus the 40, 541 for a 20-year bond.
There are additional fees here. Do you know about how much the additional fees would be for, if we borrow the 1.5 million that you had?
Probably about $1,000 over the 20 years.
So, not that much, okay. I mean, I shouldn't say not that much, but...
About 6,000, is that what you heard? And what are the fees associated with something like the 1.1 paid up front, paid down, and then borrowing the balance?
There would be about $1,100 to execute the State House loan note.
Okay. So, about a 5,000, just shy of a $5,000 savings in that aspect as well.
Correct.
And then, in the third example, we're looking at a six-year note with a carrying cost of 77, and then we're showing about $100,000 investment loss for the first five years, and that's it.
That's correct.
Is where the 177 comes from versus the 500s in the other two examples?
Right.
It's only showing the investment loss for the first five years.
Correct.
Right. If, are you good?
I'm good.
Dan, you had a... Okay. So, to Scott's analysis, which makes sense, the cost of borrowing, or the cost of the scenarios, the 20-year bond is about 550,000, give or take.
Right.
The million upfront, the investment loss for 20 years on that million with a six-year note for the balance, costs about 590, give or take?
Correct.
And then, if we just consider investment loss for the first five years, that is 177.
That's correct.
Well, so just to be clear, if we're saying we only look at the investment loss for five years, that's also the assumption that we will repay $1 million at $200,000 a year.
I would, yes.
In order to get that back in, otherwise, we'll still continue to see that loss. So, it's really not appropriate to say that the total cost would be 177. If we're saying it's 177, it's only because we're putting that million back in.
In five years.
In five years.
I agree.
Whether that's $200,000 a year, or we're, you know, going to whack it at $1 million in five years from now and have it available to regain the interest, that still comes into play when we're looking at what the total cost to the taxpayers is when we're replenishing those funds.
Right. And also, keep in mind that OPEB will also be fully funded in 2025. So, we don't need to be contributing the full 300 anymore. So, that is also something to keep in mind when we're looking for funds to contribute.
I'm thinking, go ahead.
A follow-up question on that. When you say it doesn't have to be fully funded at 300, have we ever figured out what the investment amount would be? What does it get reduced to?
I did email you that.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
It's in there somewhere.
It is. You did. You did. I do remember seeing it now.
I just want to remind you all the conversation you're having. The last time you had this conversation, when you were talking about the library project, both boards set a policy that when we remove money temporarily from the stabilization account, there's a commitment to restore it, and we have a repayment plan. So, that's something that by policy you've already passed us with. So, if you wanted to move in this direction, we would formulate a proposal to you on how you would repay that.
So, down that thread, because that's where I wanted to talk through. We executed a similar decision that the taxpayers supported for the public library. We are paying that back into stabilization.
Correct.
That was fully funded from stabilization and other appropriations. How many payments are remaining? Do you know offhand? Is it two?
I believe two.
So, FY '23 and FY '24?
I believe that's correct.
And those are about 200 and...
253?
About.
It's approximately 253.
Okay. And I ask that because for me, I mean, we're talking about this needs to be done before the end of the current fiscal year, right?
We would like to make a decision before the bond comes up in March.
Okay, even better.
It would be wonderful. We could go ahead, we could short-term borrow again if we needed to. So, but again, that's more of a cost too, so we would...
And I only ask because for me, if we were going to propose this to the taxpayers, that this is a better path, whether it's a portion of or even potentially the whole thing, how long? When could we start paying on that? If we're able to sustain the 253 a year that we've been doing, when that completes, could we begin doing that with another borrowing? And would that all make sense if we all feel that's the best fiscal decision? That'll help us get better to what that lost investment is because it's probably more than five years if we're still paying on the other one.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably seven or eight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, the analysis that I prepared did not assume repayment of the stabilization fund. To make this really, why we want to add back repayment as an assumption.
Right. Because if it's over years, then our investment loss decreases instead of being as linear as you have it. Yeah, I follow. Dan?
It would be even better for us.
It would be even less loss, yes.
If I understand this right, if we borrow $1 million from ourselves, as long as we commit to pay it back, four, five, six payments, 200-plus thousand a year, then we save 400,000, 500,000 dollars. And it's going to cost us about 100 and something thousand instead of the 500, 600,000.
Three.
Three.
Yeah, about three.
Two to three, probably, depending how that lays out.
And depends on how quickly you repay it, and then we're just losing interest. But yes, as long as we come up with a good plan. Yep, absolutely.
Two to three, so say conservative in the ballpark, if we save about a quarter billion dollars, if we borrow this from ourselves and pay it back as we plan to do, it would be the best deal for the taxpayers financially, if that's what they want to do. Doing it any other way would cost us more.
I believe that's accurate from what I see. And this is all... And this is only for borrowing two thirds of it, not the entire project. Can we borrow the whole project or do we have to borrow? I mean, I'm sorry, can we fund the whole project ourselves or do we?
We could.
Have to extend the note?
We have 10 million in stabilization right now.
Cause right now we're just under a short term, so we could pay that back and move on.
Yeah, we could, we could. That is another option.
So my only concern with something like using stabilization for that is how, how far do we spread, how thin do we spread ourselves out using that stabilization? Knowing that we have, um, some other major projects in this town that we have to take care of. There is Poplar Mountain that needs to be taken care of. We have a couple of bridges that need to be taken care of. We have other, you know, issues that are in this town that need to be addressed and they're gonna, they're gonna be a hit to the pocket no matter how we look at it. And so, you know, if we keep saying, let's go back to stabilization, let's take stabilization and utilize that, that's fine, but we're talking about a multi-year payback. And so we don't see that stabilization return for use. And so if we're talking about, you know, a couple million dollars for a poplar and a million and a half for a bridge, and now we're talking six or seven million dollars. And every time we say, let's borrow it from ourselves and pay it back, our stabilization drops down to three and a half, four million dollars? That, that is, given the way our town is situated and, you know, we've lauded ourselves as somebody who's really fortunate to have the stabilization that we have, I would hate to keep spending that like crazy in the short term. It, it just has to be part of that conversation because we do have more than just this one project that we're looking at. This one happened, we do have to pay for it, and this is the one that's in front of us. But we also have several future projects that have to happen that are gonna come up. Capital Planning Committee is gonna be looking at them. We're gonna be discussing all those in, in the next couple of months.
Buildings, I mean, we have a lot.
Yeah, we have, we have a lot, so.
Which might make sense to do some borrowing from ourselves and some borrowing.
And while it might cost more, it still keeps us in a spot where we have the reserves if something should happen and we, we need those reserves. That was the whole point of the stabilization. It wasn't a capital improvement stabilization. It was a general stabilization, so should something catastrophic happen with the town, we have it and it's there. And we've created another stabilization fund that is supposed to be for all of these projects. Should we get there, these were all, some of these were unforeseen things, that's where we are now. But I just want to keep that as part of the conversation.
I, I agree and also think that strategically funding one out of there as we go along, if it makes sense, may make sense. And we're close to paying back the library. Close is relative, but we're close.
Yeah.
We've paid back a big bulk of that through the grants from the state and other things. So we are well back, well, within maybe a half a million of where it was. That being said, does our policy not have a floor on how much we even consider for this in that policy we drafted? Do you recall? I believe it didn't.
It was a point that you created for what you would aim to keep in the, as a balance. Because you used to have a ceiling that you had regularly run up against.
Okay.
And when that was removed in the Muni mod changes in 2016, the conversation turned into what was at least the target for a maintenance goal. So you did establish that in the, in the policy.
Cause I don't think, I, I'll speak for myself, I agree with you, we don't want to get down to that.
Right.
I think strategically using a portion is fine, but using a majority is probably not in my mind. Ben, did you?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if your board had set some kind of floor and how did they set that?
I don't have the policy in front of me, but we do have the policy that we drafted when we did the consideration of taking the money from the stabilization the first time of the substance. I'm sure it's been done before, but nothing like what we did for library.
Could you pass it, email that to FinCom, just leave the number.
Do it as we are sitting here.
So knowing that we all knew about the borrowing, but obviously a very fair question of how do we fund it and should we really be borrowing and what portion? Wasn't something we've discussed prior. I don't think we, I think we all probably want a week or two to think it over and come back to the table on this topic. But I want to make sure everyone, any other questions, thoughts before we do? I just, I don't think we'll come to a decision tonight, obviously.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Right, anyone, any others? Then, thank you for bringing it forth and proposing it. Appreciate you joining us tonight. And if we have further questions, we'll, we'll let Jennifer know and she can reach out to you as well if, if we need some, some data. I think generally this gave us, at least for me, what I needed to understand the, the, the large variables. Obviously, the minutia of exactly how much money will vary depending on what strategy we may take. But it's a good summary of directionally what, what our options are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Having a good evening.
You too, thank you. Anything else that the FinCom would like in regards to this, to think it over? Anything, I mean, we'll, we'll put it on for our next budget meeting to, you know, continue talking about. But just anything in between that anyone has questions on that we can get data for? Or does this pretty much give you enough to chew on? Okay. It's an interesting question.
Oh, of course, I have one further question. Jennifer, I'll, I'll pose it to you and maybe you can find out over, over time. Would these, or you might even know it, with a bond, any early repayment penalties?
You can, so if you go with a 20 year, you have to have, I think, at least eight years.
Okay.
Or you have a penalty?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Cause sometimes borrowing it and then being able to repay it. The bond at a higher rate sometimes might be more advantageous if we have it, but we're not locked into the higher payment. But if we have it, we budget it and we pay it. Okay, thank you.
I did think that because the carrying, I guess the one thing I'll throw out there in terms of your comments about the larger projects, we have bridges, roads, buildings, all these things coming up, probably in the next handful of years. If we have to borrow for a majority of them, because we're not gonna be able to fund them, if we can't get enough grant money to help, that's a lot of payments every year to carry. We may not be able to be in the position to put a quarter million dollars in, back into stabilization every year if we're paying. I think in the 20 year example, it was, uh, something around $80,000, $100,000 a year in loan payments. So you stock three or four of those up and that's a pretty big number. And if we burn it for 20 years, we'll be paying it while we're doing the other projects, so. That's the only thing that I was contemplating as we're, we're talking about this.
Yeah, that's, that's a concern of mine as well. And, um, this is just a suggestion, but you know, we could pay out, deal with the one we're dealing with now and, and, and take it to its final payment and then go to whatever the next project is, depending on how long that's going to take. When you look at, at the bridges, typically it takes a couple of years to do that to begin with. It's not gonna change anything for, for the residents, it's still gonna be what it is. But it's, it's something that makes it a little bit palatable going forward. And take care of one debt and, and pay it off. At least that's what I do at home. And then we move to the next one. I, I mean, that may be a way to, to, to do it, take it one at a time.
I think that's kind of what Scott was saying too. Even if we don't, even if we borrowed for every project.
Sure.
Once we have that kind of funding, even if it's just paying the borrowing back faster.
Sure.
It's an option, right?
Yeah.
And what if the solar returns come off of where the library is at? Isn't there almost 100,000 going back that we did not use for the library solar? So it won't not come off of the 250 and change that we pay?
And that's up to the, these.
I mean, could, I guess I should say, could it come off of?
If you oversend that, yes.
If that's where we transfer that money back to rather than the general, the general, yes. But I think it's a good idea personally. To move it in the direction of paying back the stabilization faster rather than.
I believe that's how we have the article written.
So it would increase the.
Yeah, it's kind of going along with what Bill is saying. If you were to take the two payments, which is just over 500, and it'd be shaved off, it was 118 from the solar. I don't know why that number jumped to my head, I know it's over. But that would at least knock some of that off and then could we budget the remaining two payments as Bill was saying, and condense it for one? And then if we work while earning for the, for the, this, then one slate is like clean.
170,000.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah. I'm liking what you're saying, if we can budget in this plan, we can just pay the amount off or pay it back to stabilization.
Theory of $100,000 grant coming once the certification is complete.
That's literally one payment, it's over one payment.
Do we have any TAs?
It, it could be as late as April.
As late as April? Oh, well, that's.
That's not too bad. Oh, okay.
It's only three and a half months away, so.
Well, this fiscal year, that, that, that feels good to hear, this fiscal year, we could be budgeting for the final payment next fiscal year.
Right.
So just, just looking at numbers, just to throw it out there, if we're talking about borrowing the entire, the entire amount and then using accelerated payoff schedule, I was anticipating around $2 million. You'd, if you paid it off faster, you'd save several thousand in, in interest payments. So it just assumed around $2 million and did about an eight and a half year payoff to give you some wiggle room, because you don't want to get down and not have enough to be able to string it past the eight years and incur the, the fees for paying it off too early. So did it about eight and a half? If we were paying about 225 a year, we would pay that off in eight to eight and a half years. So just to keep that in mind of what that breaks down, it'd probably be a little bit less because it wouldn't actually be, I use 2 million instead of 2.1 for the total cost. There'd be some cost savings, you know, assuming we would save 100,000 because we would shave off 12 years of interest payments. But just something to think about when you're looking at what, what the borrowing cost looks like if we want to borrow the whole thing and pay it off in accelerated payments.
Okay, only other thing that you all, to, to the earlier conversation, the impact on your operating budget. If we, regardless of what debt, debt schedule you assume, there's definitely a, a freezing of those available funds as contractual obligations change over, over the next few years, other things that you have to respond to. That will be a, an item that will be locked going forward. So however the two boards figure out your strategy, we just want to balance that, especially as we prepare the 23 budget. Right now, there's not a debt service built into the 23 budget requests. So whatever you decide on is what we would have to build into that.
I mean, reading this, we should probably be talking about something around 100, just to service this next year. And I think your point, let me review, that made it, is probably accurate. We probably won't get into another one until we're coming to fiscal 24 because of the time to do a project and actually complete the final borrowing and everything else. So we probably don't have another large debt service that we are gonna take on it for another year.
Right.
Beyond this, but I guess, I'm recommending we pencil in 100,000 debt service account as a starting point. Can always tweak that a little, but. Am I correct to assume that if we did a 15 year, the prepayment would be a little, penalty years would be less potentially?
I don't think so, but I'll ask David to round.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering a 15. I, I don't think we'd want to get a payment higher than 15. If we're contingent on whether we can fund it more, because it's gonna increase that base payment.
Right.
But if that brought us down to a five year prepayment, it feels like it gives us more flexibility if we're paying off early to not be penalized. In that prepayment, I guess the only other question is, is that in full or is that any additional principal payments? Because in theory, we would be making principal payments every year to make it down. Just not the final payment. Anything else, one minute?
Nope.
Okay. On to more numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving into the FY 23 operating budget request. Felice, you are up first, Chief Hulse, if you would, if you're not up here. Looking to get there in section three or the, or the tab. So is everyone there?
Yep.
Okay. Chief, if you just want to give us the high level, obviously we have the detail on the highlights and challenges and goals and initiatives, but if you only give us just a synopsis of, of the current year and what's coming.
Well, thank you for having me. Thank you to the FinCom. I'll start with the animal control position, if that's okay.
Yeah, let's flip.
That's fine.
We just got flipped to a different page here. Uh, that's three seconds.
So some of the accomplishments was, is that coming out of the quarantine and COVID is some of the training hadn't been accomplished and, and met. So we got all the training certifications up to date on the animal control officer position. And we created a new payroll that makes it easier for us to track callouts and how many hours he's actually, or she, if it was a female in that position, is putting in. And it also does, helps us track what the officer is doing in Berningston. So it's been helpful in keeping a better accurate account of hours. Challenges that we're facing is that we may be in a situation where we may have to replace our animal control officer due to, due to an illness. I don't know, we hope to know more in, in the upcoming weeks to month, but it's not looking good. And so with that being said, I don't have any, any changes to the wages, the expenses, the ACO vehicle or the equipment. We're, we're asking to just level fund that. Is there any questions on the, the animal control?
Chief Hulse, how many miles, how many miles are on the, on the cruiser for the animal control?
Off the top of my head, Mr. Bembry, I don't know the mileage. I do know that since it has gone to the animal control officer, the mileage has decreased significantly. But we've also run into issues where it sits more often and we have found that it's dead or the, the belts aren't turning and stuff. As you can see, I'm sure you've all seen it sitting over at Greenfield Auto right now with some work that needed to be done. But it seems, it seems to be getting us through. I don't, I don't foresee an issue for this year. In, in the, in the next probably three to five years, we may have to look into some sort of other vehicle. And I've actually talked with town administrator and, and I've joked with Glenn that I think that van that they bought, the, the, the building maintenance position would be a good vehicle to just inherit. So that might be something that we would look into, but.
Thank you.
Everybody else is good?
Uh huh.
Any questions? No, good. Go back to the police budget.
Yeah, we'll go back to the police budget. So some, some of the accomplishments, we had an officer graduate the full-time academy. Chief Blair's retirement was finalized and weatherization of the department was completed. And I didn't add this one because we're still currently working on it, but we've made some progress. The radio upgrades, Chief Blair and Chief Wonka had started that process. And when I became the chief, I kind of asked Chief Wonka to just run with it and he has. But we've gotten all new radios put into our cruisers. We're just waiting on the station and the ACO vehicle will be installed at some point. But that process is moving forward and the new radios seem to be working better than, than the old ones, so.
So, so what's the, what's the time that it'll be? So what's the, what's the time that it'll be online, fully online?
For the radio? So we're waiting on two repeaters, two repeaters to be built for Motorola, and that will finalize the last two radio installs for the fire trucks, the ACO vehicle, and the police station. So we're down to five mobile radios, all the portables have been fielded, as far as the PD goes, we're doing some channel lineup stuff with the UPD, but I would say we're 90% complete.
Yeah, and we seem to be very happy with the portable radios and the cruiser radios, so.
That was my next question, I know you did some testing throughout the town, are we happy with the level of communication?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yes and no. The portable coverage in the center town is less desirable, but I did a lot of complaining to the statewide radio manager, and received a phone call from him. So the master plan from the state is to put an infill site in Irving, right across the street from the paper mill and the cell tower that's located there, so hopefully that will give us the info we're looking for to cover the center town. We all know, they said it was quick, we know the state's quick is, I said two years, and he said, we're looking at it a lot quicker than that, so maybe a year, so they're moving pretty fast, so.
Thank you.
But we've been happy, I mean, we have been happy, so.
Okay.
Thus far. So that was some of the accomplishments, I'm sure we have many more. Just, when I wrote this, I couldn't think of too many, I don't know why.
I'm going to acknowledge one year promotion to chief.
Yep.
We'll note that for your accomplishment.
Some challenges, we need to get two officers to the full-time academy. When I prepared this, that was a few weeks ago, we actually just had an officer resign, so we are going to start the hiring process again, hopefully we get somebody with the full-time academy, but we'll see. I know neighboring areas are having trouble recruiting officers with what's going on in the climate, so we'll see what we get, but we do have to send two. And I just updated the chairman and the town administrator, we have both those officers scheduled to start an academy in June, so hopefully, hopefully they do what's necessary to get themselves in. The police reform has been a major challenge for us, meeting their deadlines, and there's a lot of unknowns, there's still a lot out there that we just don't know. They are a committee that isn't even fully developed, they don't even have a work site, but yet they're putting, you know, requirements on us to provide information, so it's been difficult. And then they'll ask for the information, and then they turn around and they change their own deadlines, so it's been a challenge, but we're working through it. We have had some violent calls for service, we've had some pretty horrific calls, as we do every year, but this year we've had some pretty calls that involved guns and knives and so forth. A challenge is still getting the station open 24 hours, you know, with COVID and everything, but we are open to the public when they call and request to do something, we are making that available. And then another challenge is just finalizing the union, the select board has been working with, and the town administrator's been working with the union to finalize that process, and what that will actually look like. Goals for the upcoming year is, like I stated, is to get those two officers into the academy, graduated, now look to hire a new officer. What I'd like to try to do is, and we can get into it when we do the numbers, but is create a line item, move it. We, it looks like originally, the prior chief had a special article in there for the police academy, I'd like to actually move that, police academy, maybe recall that line, police academy slash hiring of new officers, and move that up to the regular line items, does seem that we are hiring every year to two years. Within a few years, we may not have to worry about the full academy, because the part-time academy is going away, but again, that's an unknown with post and stuff. We have been, I've been able to staff officers, and I would like to continue to staff officers with multiple officers on a shift. Right now, we're running two officers on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and then we are having a really decent overlap of officers. Prior to Officer Flower resigning, we had our 11 to 7 guy actually coming in at nine o'clock at night, and working nine to two with three officers at times, so it's been really helpful, especially with the calls that we've been seeing. I'd like to be able to continue that when we're at full staffing. And then, so down under the significant budget changes, I mean, you guys all have it right there in front of you, but obviously, you know, police wages, I'm looking at a difference there. I'm looking at a difference in my cell phones, my cruiser maintenance, I do find that I run my cruiser maintenance in the red every year. And then my firearms and ammunition, again, with post and the requirements that have been put on us, they now require us to certify, shoot, certify, and then do like an additional training of policy updates, or use of force sort of training, and we've been working with some areas to implement some sort of like school, reenact a school shooting, where we're using soft bullets and so forth, which obviously we've never budgeted for the cost of those types of ammunition that we would need. Our firearms that we have will work, we would just have to purchase the ammo. And so that was the reason for the firearms going up. And then obviously, if you look way down under the special articles, it's just to move that article and to fund that article with 15,300. Again, I know that sounds like a big number, but we are looking at, knowing two officers need to go to the academy, and I have broken down the cost of the academy if you guys need that. And that's about it, that's what I got for you, hopefully that's thorough.
Thank you, Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
The county dues, radio antenna maintenance, is that, with all the changes, and either, Chief, is that the right number going into next year? With where we are.
Can I defer to the fire chief?
Absolutely. Other one, I know he's taking the lead, so.
We've got $2,000, Chief, in that line.
We got a.
Bob, 3,000.
So I was told it was going to hold fast to what it was issued. This is the assumption, we still are going to need to maintain that, we still need to maintain the old system for a number of years. We, I believe the board just after signing the agreement on that, when we received the free radios, that we would continue that payment, because there was some community that said, hey, we're not going to pay it anymore, but I don't, when we were discussing, I don't believe that there was an increase scheduled for it.
Is there anything additional we need with regards to the new?
I just have no.
Okay.
We're still sitting, I think we had 150,000 that we had after account for to purchase new equipment, I think after everything's all said and done, we'll be at about 120.
Sorry, Chairman, I don't know much about the radios, to be honest with you, I.
Totally fine, sir, totally fine. I just wanted to make sure, are there new costs in addition to the continued cost of the old system for now?
Not as, I think we're still, I think we still got a pretty good buffer in there if we find we need to purchase some more equipment.
Okay. Questions on Chief's budget?
Chief, if you're going to discuss this with capital, that's totally fine.
Yep.
I just noticed in your golden initiative, an additional cruiser.
That was a capital, and I was, I'm sorry, we can discuss it, but I was told that we're not discussing capitals, so.
No, it's fine.
And I don't even, is it, Ben, are you my, who, I don't even know who I.
I'm share capital.
But who has PD, I don't. Did you?
Peter Mallett.
Oh, Peter, okay. Too many liaison lists going through my head there.
Yeah, I was doing the same thing, trying to figure it out.
I feel like maybe we should post those somewhere.
That's actually not a bad idea.
Yeah, it gets confusing, it's not even, even those who serve on multiple.
Who what liaison is whose, yeah.
But yes, that will be discussed during the capital process.
Chief, I have one question on.
Yes, sir, Mr. Benberry.
The ammunition, and the question is not on what it costs to purchase ammunition, but just, when you do purchase ammunition for the year, for training, and for duty carry, and the changeover ammunition as well, do we, do we keep the ammunition ourselves at station, or do we, like when the officers go to the academy, the funds are given to the academy to purchase ammunition as a cost saving, it costs less to buy bulk ammunition as opposed to each department purchasing its own? I'm not exactly sure how it's done, and.
Yep. Yeah, we purchase our own ammunition, sir, we purchase our own and we keep it at the station. Each officer is given what they carry, which is, we give them 50 rounds, that gives them extra rounds, but then, like if an officer wants to shoot, they come to see me or the sergeant, and they would say, I'd like to go to the range and shoot 100 rounds, 200 rounds, whatever, that would be given to them out of our storage. When they go to the academy, again, that's an individual purchase, so the town of Irving is just purchasing for the town of Irving, there's not a, I agree, I hear what you're saying, like I know, like probably for Greenfield, the purchase ammo is a lot cheaper, because they're buying a lot more, but for us, no, it's an individual purchase, and it's individually stored at our place.
Just a question, one of the increases on the diamond wages, is that related to paying people to cover while you're having people at the academy, you have people covering, or is there individuals getting raised in jobs?
Yes, sir. So that was based on, I took what their next step would be, and I did break that all down, and I timed it, their hourly rate by 2,088 hours, which is what a calendar year is, and that was at their next step. And two officers, I'd just like to point out, the reason there was two officers, and I even broke them down as, from now until they go to the academy, their rate is one, and then after they graduate the academy, their rate goes to another rate, so I think I did six months of one rate, and then six months of another rate, so they would be looking at going up halfway through the FY '23. And then overtime and stuff was just based on what vacation is available, sick time, yeah, I took five sick days, I find that most people are using, you know, three to five, six days a year, with COVID, it's been a little worse. But again, with the double staffing shifts, we had an officer that's out this week, and we only had to fill one shift with overtime, because the other shift, there was already an officer on, and I know that kind of defeats the purpose of having two on, but it's just a way to try to, try to balance the overtime budget a little bit.
I'm fine with it, I look at each budget, you know, what percentage it was from last year, and then compare it with the narrative, and see is the narrative reasonable, in this case, certainly not.
Yeah, I think my overall was 36,000, again, that's with the 15,300 for the, I mean, that's kind of a big number. And then, well, actually, I didn't add in the 9,000 for the incentive, so when Chief Blair was here, he received the Quinn, which was 9,100, it looks like that was what you guys had set aside, I don't, I'm assuming that that was the number for, you know, for his degree, and we're anticipating with the union that there's probably going to be some sort of, that's why I asked to just bring back that number.
I have a question.
Any other questions?
None.
All right, Chief, thank you, sir. You are off the hook.
Last year was a lot easier, it was kind of already prepared, and it was.
You just had to sit there. Chief Wonka, you're up. I'll move on to Fire Department. Welcome, sir.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for having me.
You are section 3-4, I believe?
What section you say?
3-4. 3-4, yeah. 3-4, yeah, I believe so. Should be on the bottom right, I think, page numbers.
These tabs are different. These tabs are.
Forgive all our technical difficulties, we have a few.
Highlights and challenges were the rising cost of goods and services over the years, COVID really, COVID really put a hurt on everything, all the way across the boards, we've seen, I've been told anywhere from 15 to 30% on increases on just about everything coming through. The accomplishments for the department was the transition to the new service, the new ALS provider from our free service that we were getting from AMR, we transitioned over to Northfield, and over the last six months, that's been phenomenal. I think there's only been one call that they, they could not staff, and vice versa with Orange, they've staffed a couple over there, too, so we're extremely happy with the service we're getting from them.
Just on that, Chief, before you move on, I know when you proposed it, there was concerns about availability at all, so it sounds like that's been mitigated by having Northfield.
Yeah, he's brought on several more per diem paramedics up there, he actually brought on two more, I believe he has two more full-time staff members up there now, so they're staffing at least 16 hours a day with at least one member. And there's been a couple of times where we've had car accidents where we've needed both rigs down here, and we've had to provide a driver, but that's understandable with the small service that they have.
Response times, same or better?
Maybe, well, yeah, I'd say right around the same. I mean, so they staff one full-time member up there, and then they rely on somebody to either meet them on scene or in there, but we haven't seen a huge delay on scene with on-scene time. It's hard to judge now, because I mean, we're here, so when we get the call, we're on scene, I pulled the numbers this morning, our average response time from time of tone to on-scene time is two and a half minutes, depending on where we are in town, so, I mean, that's the overall average over the 350 calls that we did, so, I mean, we're getting there pretty quick, it gives us some time to get on scene and get some good patient diagnosis going before they get there.
Thank you, sir.
Some of the other challenges were just the rise, the rise in the ALS service from Orange, due to the amount of coverages that they had to cover for AMR. We should see, I had a conversation with Chief Young from Orange, he gave me the numbers from Orange, a rough, very, very rough number, but we should hopefully see a decrease in that next year, having Northfield on, and actually covering the calls, so. Goals and initiative, moving into fiscal year '23, are offering the same high-quality service that we constantly offer to the town, while maintaining a fiscally responsible spending stance. The price increases in goods, I haven't seen anything, have you heard anything, Brian, from electric company, oil company, any costs on those? Okay.
Completely, but I'll reach out to our liaison.
That was one of my only unknowns during the budgets, everybody else kind of got back to me with, there was going to be some increases, you know, just hardware alone is anywhere from 15 to 30%, a gear, turnout gear, they told me that was going to be mass, because they were on the state bid for this year, and this was the. This year, next year, we're going to see about a 30% increase on turnout gear, so. We just bought four sets this year, so hopefully we should be good for a little bit, but. Significant budget changes, we added the longevity line, and that actually kicks in this year. And I, so I've, we've, we've historically had a extremely high call-forth wage, and that was budget high a number of years ago due to a large fire, a couple days, I think it was three or four day brush fire we had going on, where we had to come back and ask for money, and ask for money, and ask for money, so we, that was increased that year, so I've tried to decrease that a little bit whilst still maintaining that buffer in case there's a big, a large. there's a big, a large incident. But that's about it for that. Are there any questions there?
Chief, are you making reference to the 10,000 increase?
Decrease.
Increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think when I, so when I found, when I did all the final numbers, it came in and I think it was up over 10%, right? Is that what we discussed? It was somewhere in there and I was trying to keep it at least down into the 3% to 5% increase. So we decreased it there to make up for some of the other ones. The two wage line items for myself and the full-time staff were a carryover from last year. They weren't adjusted properly to the new wage lines that were brought out. So we, I adjusted them this year for that and we decreased it there. The ambulance service number, so 80,000 is what I placed in there for budget holder. Orange got back to me just the other day and they're going to come in, he's going to come in right around 55,000, so that, the total on that will be 70,000. So we can reduce that. We can reduce that some or leave it alone for now and have discussions on that later. He gave me a preliminary, preliminary guess that it was going to be just a little under 55,000.
You want to get back to us when you have finals?
I can.
But we'll tentatively say it may go down 10?
Yep. But I feel pretty confident the county dues, radio antenna maintenance budget, mine was higher last year for some reason, so I decreased it down. If you look at what we expended was just a little under 3,000, so I brought it down to 35, hoping that there wasn't going to be an increase there. I don't believe that FERCAG set their budget correct.
Not the latest, oh. Not the latest, this one.
I try to get all these people and tell them that, you know, hey, we start talking about our budget really early. We have managed to needle some people into starting to talk about their stuff quicker
In terms of that one, should you and Chief Holst carry the same? Do you split it?
We paid twice. We pay for two.
But the rate, the budgeted amounts are different. Should they be the same?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know how they ever got off track.
Chief, with your blessing of just recommending we change your county radio dues down to 3,500 to match Chief Wonka's from the 4,200 request? If that's good with you, sir?
Last year I had 3,000, so we're keeping it at 3,000. I didn't have 35.
I believe Chief Wonka is recommending 35.
I had three. And I expended, expended 2,081,02.
But you have 4,200 in the current year request, I believe, if I'm reading that right.
Yeah, yeah. That's what it says on here.
42 is for the control system. Did I, maybe I put it in the wrong line. I adjusted it on, I think I adjusted it online. The police station access control system should be the 42. The county dues radio should be 3.
Do you know which line that access is in? It's not in, it doesn't have its own line. Is it part of computers? That's okay, sir. Sorry, I'm switching back. Sorry, Chief Wonka.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. This, this, this one here. Oh, so this is what's in our book.
Yeah, we have 4,200.
Yeah, 42.
So we have 4,200, not 42,000, 4,200 for radios.
I don't know where that, I don't know where that came from.
Okay. Okay, so I'll stand corrected. Based on your submission, can I change that to 3,500, increase it 500 from what you have, decrease it 700 from what we have to match Chief Wonka's? If, with your blessing?
I'll take 500.
Okay, so I'm just proposing we change the police department last line county dues radio maintenance to request of 3,500, such $700 decrease.
Jake, the line item that the chief was referring to, is that, is it an IT?
That is a special, it's a special appropriation.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure it didn't get lost.
No, it's actually 42,000, not 4,200. It looks close, but it's not the same.
Got it.
It's a, it's an upgrade of the access control for the police station.
Got it.
That we have not executed yet. Okay, sorry, Chief Wonka. Thank you for that sidebar. Moving back to your budget. Questions, comments from anyone? Okay, no questions. We'll flip to emergency management department.
I believe you left that one alone, right?
It's level funded.
So the highlights and challenges were COVID-19. I can tell you that.
Both highlights and challenges. Got it.
It was quite the year. The emergency management department, as myself, did a lot of work through the county with COVID-19. And I believe we're still chasing that kind of stuff down, so trying to get reimbursements from FEMA and that kind of stuff. So we're just going to leave that alone because I don't feel like it, we can make an educated guess on where it should be right now with, given the state of affairs. And we're seeing a huge increase in COVID response now again, so I believe our numbers are higher now than they were when this whole thing started. So we're seeing a resurgence with it. Where it lands, I have no idea.
It's not budget-related, but I just want to say, just want to commend you for the COVID-19 response throughout the last couple of years because I don't, I think a lot of towns saw a board of health taking on a lot of that burden and we did not have a board of health that had the capacity at the time to do that. And I know that fell squarely on your shoulders for the last couple of years to take the brunt of that and run with it. And I've heard a lot of good things about how, you know, effective the communication was and the level of effort put in. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I thought you were going to say, I heard people saying you... I did a lot of complaining to a lot of people.
Well...
For the right stuff for us. For on our behalf.
People heard that and it got some things done that maybe wouldn't have been done had you not, so.
Yeah, and getting us supplies early on and, you know, working with the county and the surrounding towns on early vaccines and everything else is huge.
It was.
Unfortunately, it's not over.
No.
I read on the news that they had to shut the East Side Mall down as a testing site because they had so many people. I don't understand. I mean, we opened six more sites here in Massachusetts, but all of them are within Boston. I don't know why we didn't open up anything else out here. But if anybody needs a test, just run over to GCC, sign up. You can get a quick test, you get your results back in 24 hours and it's good to go. We did get, did we ever come up with something on the home tests? Did they ever, on the home tests that we received?
The board of health worked with Paula and worked with the school principal to distribute test kits over the last two weeks. I believe they're still handing out some kits. And we just became aware over the weekend of the availability of the state contract so the town can explore an option to acquire additional test kits at the state rate.
I will forward you the email from MEMA. There's a training coming up on that within the next week or two, I think, on purchasing them. I'm leery on purchasing those adjunct tests because they had to open, we received 540 of them. They had to open every single one of them and put a sticker in there that if this test positive, then you should still seek a PCR test. And the PCR testing site in Greenfield is phenomenal. If you're in and out of there in less than 10 minutes, so it's a really good site and I think the more people that use it, the more we can prove out here and at least Western Mass that we need to maintain that, so.
Is that the GCC check?
Through CIC Health, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the staff is very friendly.
Important sidebar, but any questions on level funded other than how?
Sorry.
Appreciate, no, it's all important stuff, not moving us from it, but just back to budget-wise. Any questions?
None.
Okay. Chief, I believe that's the last one we have you for here. So you are off the hook, sir. Thank you. I assume, Brian, you are standing in for the inspection services, but it's level funded, so I don't think there's...
And they renewed the three-year agreement. And in the agreement, they proposed no increases. So I haven't seen any information to the contrary, but if something changes in January, I'll be sure to let the boards know.
Any concerns with the services or the fund? Okay. Moving on to tree warden.
Tree warden couldn't be with us tonight.
Understood.
But he is submitting a level funded budget request for FY '23. And he highlighted in his FY '22 comments, the tree planting program that you all discussed with them two years ago. And he stood that up in the past year. And so he's been working with residents and he's also been coordinating his work with the street improvement projects, both the pedestrian and the roadway, as part of the highway department efforts, too. So he already has trees scheduled to be planted first thing in the spring and to continue to operate that program. So he thinks a level funded budget will allow him to continue that work.
Any questions or concerns? I will just say it's nice to see some coming back. I know that's been a big concern for residents as trees age and are removed. And so it's good to see that we're seeing some proactive replacement starting.
I would agree. I've taken advantage of that. My neighbors have as well and we're very appreciative of the work that the tree warden has done in this regard. And he's friendly and easy to talk to and checks on the trees and just a value to the community as a whole and does a good job.
I'll put a plug out there that people may not know. I know my neighbor across the street had to take out a tree in preparation for a widening of the driveway and the tree warden had mentioned, any private residents, if they're looking, if they feel like there's not enough trees in the area, if there was a tree there years ago and it got removed, or there was one on a grass belt that got removed for safety reasons, just reach out and he will try and work it into a budget to see what they can do. And it's not just, you know, oaks and elms. There's flowering trees. There's all sorts of options. So just, I know he mentioned that in passing, that he was working with residents, private residents to make sure that we keep replacing trees in town and we keep a high number of trees rotating through because we know more will come down in the years to come.
Yeah, and our new sidewalk says they're going in and we're seeing new plantings going in around them in areas where we had to take out aged, you know, older trees. It's good to see revitalization that also is replacement. Superintendent McCrory, welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
You've got quite a few on the list here, sir.
I do. I'd like to start out by saying that the town is very fortunate to have Mr. Gordon as a tree warden also. He's made highway department work because the highway, highway department used to take on a lot of that. So he's relieved a lot of that.
We're all happy with the job he's doing, so hope he continues.
He will.
I'm not touching that one. You want to start with highway? Snow, streetlight, fuel and cemetery?
Sure, what section is it?
5-2.
Oh, you want the narrative, too?
Yeah, just a quick run through highlights.
Again, highlights and challenges. I think everybody started out with the COVID. Ours also was the July 18 rainstorm and flood event. That has taken up a lot of time of our summer. We've had a lot of washouts, a lot of bridges. We know bridges are out. Coverts collapsed, sides of roads are washed out, trees. So we have spent a lot of time with that and will still be continuing that work in the spring and the summer. Some of a lot of the challenges along with that is getting pipe, getting material to do that work. Leader, not plastic pipe, but very, very hard to get a hold of, which is same reason why the mountain road around the cemetery job did not get completed this year. We finally got the last 100 feet of pipe end of October. And asphalt plants closed in November, so we couldn't open the roads up for that. Goals this year, again, we still have a lot of damage from that storm to clean up and repair. We're going to have a busy year ahead of us as soon as frost breaks. That'll be, that'll be our big jobs for this year. Some of the other highlights, sidewalk projects, the parks, Park Street Park, the Park Street paving area for the parking, the bollards. We did a lot of the prep work for that. ADA picnic table, the walkways was all prepped for that. Significant budget changes. Wages, wage increase was just based off from the step increases that are happening for the next step for everybody. Actually, there's one more thing in a highlight that I did not put in here. We'd sent a town employee to the CDL school. It's the first time that the town has ever done that, successfully passed that on his first go-around on the two-week schooling and driving test. So he passed it the first go-around. So I think that's a huge accomplishment for the town. Overtime, again, overtime wages just went up based on wage increases. Boy, somebody needs glasses.
We can blow off our screen, so I don't have to put them on, but we all have them here.
We can make it bigger, yeah, on our end.
We all were...
This is very tiny print. I have to use the computer, otherwise I can't read it.
We do need to have a conversation about that for next year. Mr. Administrator comes back for next season.
Software program update, if that's an IT thing, that's why that went up. The FERCAG vid contracts went up just a little bit. The roadside mower program is all done now. That's shared between the communities. So we're going to either need to look into purchasing, renting, or there's a private contractor that'll come out and do it also. So we have used the roadside mower again this year, but that's going to be it. So next year, we'll be looking into a different avenue for that. That is about it for the highway side of it. Streetlights, I don't know if there's anything with streetlights. Cemetery, there's a new, a software that we are still working on. Correct, Mariah?
What?
Software for the cemetery.
Cut her off guard.
Yep.
So that's budget for a new system.
Correct.
Next year.
Yes. I think that's it for highway and streetlights and cemetery.
Are we no longer budgeting for gravestones, Brian?
So we do. That is, that is in near, out of that 10,000 and that's what that, so there's a new, there's a new program that's coming up. That's what that line's going to be used for this year. I know a lot of residents are very happy with that work that's being done up there, but this year, we're going to have to, unless the FinCom wants to put another $10,000 in there for that.
Wait, what? I don't think I followed that.
So what Glenn's discussing, we have a current software that we track the cemetery deeds in. And Town Clerk Newton spoke to you back on December 13th, and he expressed a concern about the deeds. The deficit prior to that with the current program is that it refers to a lot number. The lot number is stored on a hard copy, sketched-out survey of the cemetery. It's not a database-driven layout. And so what we're trying to transition to would be a surveyed layout of the cemetery. Every lot on the GIS system would correspond to an actual deed record where the individuals who are buried there can be traced right back to that. The current software can't do any of those pieces.
I don't think that's great info, but I don't think that's the question. The cemetery expenses. You're getting there? Okay, all right, sorry.
The transition is about $8,000 to $9,000 expense.
Okay.
The ongoing maintenance is that $2,000. And so what Glenn was explaining is that typically we use the expense line item for the gravestone restoration efforts, about $9,000 a year. The proposal that we have right now for FY22 to use that money for this conversion of the software. And then FY23, we would again resume the gravestone restoration process.
So you're saying that '22, the current budget?
Current budget.
Is allocated towards that? We don't expect to do gravestone repair in FY22?
Correct.
Maybe that was a hint that $10,000 would be.
Is that a new STM article proposal that I missed? Okay, I follow now. Thank you.
I think we updated the website with your brand-new inventory of the stones that you restored this year. It's great work.
It looks great if nobody's had a chance to walk around it. Done a nice job.
I kind of hate to see the program lose momentum. Any thoughts about putting in an extra $1,000?
My thought is, we're kind of early in the process. I don't know where the whole budget's going to shake out. When I made it earlier for the question mark, you know, stone repair team, you know, there may be, I don't know what we thought of it, but we're close to the end of the process. There's some availability of funds. Yeah, keeping them up while we can is, I think, the thing to do.
But I think we're talking about the current fiscal year that we're not going to do it, correct?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be adjusting the budget another 10. It would be, do we want to add it to the STM potentially? So maybe we'll put a pin in that and come back to it when we get to the STM? Just maybe we'll footnote that, maybe we consider adding it.
And then Glenn, can you just talk to a little bit? You kind of alluded to it in your narrative, the funding for highway roadwork and possibly kind of building up a line item for that. Do you have an idea of what you'd like to see in there or?
As much as possible.
Well, difficult. It used to start out as $150,000 a year years ago.
Okay.
And then a few years ago, we moved it to 250,000.
It was 200.
200,000?
Yeah.
And then it would just build for, build and then be used for a specific project later in date. But because we built up so much for the River Warner Stratch, and it pretty much wiped it all out. So whether it was going to be a capital or something that was added into here, that was a question that we wanted to bring up tonight. If it should be a capital or for an individual project or just an account for roadwork if something was to come up.
It's one of those, you used to treat it like a recurring special article that you funded every year?
Yeah.
And then in the last few years, we've had these larger projects that you invested in. And so we didn't do both. We didn't do the recurring article and the special project. So the question is, how do you want to continue going forward?
And while it's more of an operating budget cost, we don't want it to expire. If we don't spend it that year, we're saving it up for others. So is it recurring or is it capital?
Right.
Are you sure that somebody wrote in capital on tonight?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll defer to the capital planning committee on that question.
Fair.
And have to help answer it later.
And unfortunately, $200,000 does not go far for roadwork anymore.
The other underlying thing that happened was, I mean, that June storm highlighted that our covert systems, especially on those ancillary roads, are less than desirable to handle what we're seeing now.
We had that covert study done as well, and we have action items out of that to tackle that were pre-storm as well.
Correct.
Which are not in the capital plan, correct?
Not yet.
You'd have to ask what was submitted of. I don't think, was there any?
Those are, because some of them we're just doing out of our regular operating.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions on the highway and some budget? Okay. Ground maintenance is in here somewhere.
You're going to want to go back to section?
Is it 2? Yeah.
Trying to think of what number it would be.
216. Town building ground maintenance?
Yes, so again, highlights and challenges show the building grounds staff have continued to maintain a high level of sanitation throughout all town buildings, facilities. They reopen to the public throughout the year. Additional ground maintenance support has boosted park maintenance and is allowing for additional focus on facility needs. Goals and initiatives, building grounds initiatives are just to continue to maintain town-owned properties safely in aesthetically pleasing manner for the staff and public. No major changes are proposed for FY23. Increases are being requested for the town-wide generator preventative maintenance, postage, internet, telephone, and town offices. Slight increases in wages is related to wage change at FY22.
Probably FY23.
Probably, huh?
Probably both, but yeah. The generator preventative, I assume, covers our new POTW generator as well? It covers them all or is this?
Right. We're going to need to do a new preventive maintenance contract.
Yeah.
And we all have the generator on there.
Who covers them all with the school?
Maybe the schools on there.
All the schools on that one, too? Okay.
Okay. So this is anticipating that new coverage of?
Correct.
Should hopefully go down because they're newer. That's another story. Don't we wish? Questions for town buildings and ground maintenance?
None.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Oh, no, thank you.
I believe you're off the hook now.
Thank you all.
Happy night. Thank you.
Moving on to wastewater and water.
So Pete should be joining us remotely.
Okay.
Hopefully, he's in the queue.
That is in 5, back in 5-dash-something.
Yeah, it looks like 5-6. 5-5 will do the narrative. Yep. And while we're waiting for Pete to join us. You've got him when you're ready. Okay. I just want to ask both committees, in the past years, when you've had these conversations, I've done a summary memo of what you discussed of changes or things you want to sort of hold for future conversation. Would you like that again, so that to summarize your conversation for today?
Yeah.
And if there's something that we changed in the budget, I can go through and make those updates so you have new inserts for your books? Okay.
I don't, I personally don't need new printed copies. They can always get an updated digital. I just need the summary for now. I mean, at some point, maybe, but.
I'll take updated digital.
You got it. Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you. We are ready for Superintendent Sanders when? Bring him on. Evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You look like you're floating in a black hole. Sorry. That is quite the, that is quite the look, your dark shirt and the black background. I like it. Oh, there we go. Almost a little Mad Max. All right, sir. So if you want to run through just a brief overview of the highlights and challenges for wastewater for FY22 and then hit your goals initiatives, then we'll talk through any significant budget changes?
Sure. Okay, so I've had a very busy year. So the highlights that we had and challenges were we repaired the Route 2 pump station for S Main. It had leaked and froze last winter. Another challenge we had was replacing the tarched pump station for Sewer Main. Currently finishing out to change orders on that. We've also replaced the Flag Hill Sewer Main. And another challenge would be, we started and are still working on progress with the INI inspection townwide. And they're still going on the IP new pump station installation. Also, the new generator install was completed at POTW number one. And we continue to meet permit requirements, the new PFAS requirements and nitrogen limits. And we're in the process of rebuilding and servicing the UV system at POTW number one. The goals for the wastewater department, rebuild the UV system, clean and rebuild our grit removal system. And also to continue work with Montague to address the INI issues. We're always continuing to maintain in the pump stations. We have nine of them. Another goal is to clean out the chambers at POTW number three and Farley. And also to clean out the discharge channel at POTW number three. We continue to meet permit limits. And we're continuing to get our TCHs to keep our licenses valid. And we are now starting PFAS testing and requirements. And we also have a couple significant budget changes. I would like to increase maintenance line item by 5,000 to count for the UV system maintenance. And the UV system is approximately 12 to 13 years old. A lot of the parts were exceeding their expected life use. That's why we need to do that. And the other significant budget change would be, I'd like the purchase of another vehicle, preferably a Ford Transit Connect van. It's estimated cost is $43,000. The reason for this would be, we are now going to be a step more personal. Basically, two departments working on one vehicle. And it has and will be difficult to respond to water and wastewater that may happen at the same time as those currently personal vehicles have been used on jobs. And that would be the reason for that request.
Pete, I believe that's coming in through the capital request, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Questions or comments on the wastewater enterprise fund budget for Mr. Sanders? I'm not seeing any. Yes. Okay. I think, good? Okay. I see some people are still scrolling through. Good? Okay. Thank you, Pete. Move on to the water enterprise fund.
Okay, for the water enterprise fund, for FY22, highlights and challenges that we've had. Did a new water line connection at the tank for a new service. The staff is staying current with TCHs, up to date with the new regulations and trainings. And we're continuing our PFAS testing and meeting those requirements. We've completed the lead and copper testing reporting for this year. And we've been doing some hydrant repairs and flushing, device testing and reporting. And also we're doing all of our annual reports and dealing with the COVID issues. For FY23, our goals initiatives are the upkeep and maintenance of the distribution system. This year, coming up, we have tank inspection and cleaning. We'll continue our TCHs and stay up to date with the regulations. One of our goals is to start hydrant painting. And we'd also plan on starting a water gate exercising program and start a leak detection program. And also dealing with the challenges with the COVID issues. I don't have any significant changes to the water department budget.
I have a couple of quick questions for you. The generator maintenance, is that in the general generator maintenance line on the town building side? Does that need to be back billed to the enterprise fund or do we not worry about it from the significance level?
You back bill?
I guess the same for the wastewater generator, too. It's both of them.
You back bill insurance and retirement. So because you're trying to treat it as a cost center. So from that standpoint, we could structure it that way.
I don't know what everyone else thinks. I'm kind of going back to wastewater. That is the largest generator by far that we have in town, so that one's probably more of a significant carrier of the maintenance cost on generators. I don't know that the well one is, but if we're doing it, it's a question mark.
Consolidate it down till we see what the actual cost is for any one department. So I'd be fine with billing it back.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going out for a new contract and we can't do it for FY23, maybe it's a placeholder for '24, but just to incorporate it into that total budget to get the full picture. My other question was, you mentioned the tank cleaning and inspection for '23 on the water tank.
Yes.
Is that going to have any impact on the water users during that process?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Other questions? I was just.
Reduction, significant reduction in your water department budget? And that's because your debt service on the water tower improvements that you did several years ago has been paid as of this year. So you don't have that debt service going forward.
That sounds like a '22 highlight.
Correct. I can update the narrative with that information.
We're saying it's, paying something off is a nice thing to do.
True.
Any other questions on water? Okay. That wraps up water. Are you helping with or doing solid waste? Brian, are you handling that? Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And last but not least, on FY23 budget, solid waste. Freemium. It's the word of the year. I couldn't resist.
I had to put it back in there.
Freemium.
So in FY22, our largest challenge that we had has been the significant increase that we had experienced in your trash tonnage. While the actual tonnage in the disposal of that tonnage and the cost associated with that was a concern in other communities, would probably be more concerned than we were necessarily. My greater concern was your hauling contract. The hauling contract was built with certain assumptions based on the tonnage that we had been averaging for years. And this significant increase had resulted in additional trucks having to be allocated and then additional drivers to each of those trucks. My concern was your hauling contract with balloon in future years, higher than it was already anticipated to balloon, if we couldn't get that tonnage back under control. So we spent most of FY21 researching different options to try to understand where this tonnage was coming from. And after about 10 months of studying the issue, literally following the trash truck, meeting them in the morning, doing all the ways, we couldn't find any other source other than it truly was on the curb. But the question is, why was it on the curb? So in August, I know it was controversial, but we proposed a freemium sticker program where all Irving residents receive free trash stickers for their use. And then if they've used their allotment, they can come and purchase more. In the months since the implementation of the program, we have observed a 30% decrease on average in your trash tonnage. We are back to where you were in all of the years preceding the big spike in FY21. So we're averaging somewhere between six and a half and seven tons a week, which is again where you had been traditionally. That's right back in line with our hauling contract. You're going to notice fewer trash trucks in town because they can fit it on the trash truck that was hired for the job. So we're right back where we needed to be. Doesn't mean that you all as a community can't aim to do more in terms of recycling, and there's probably other programs we can introduce in the future. But our initial concern has been addressed. So I appreciate everybody's patience and work on that issue. The community members have done a great job of that. So the budget request does reflect some increases. Some of those are fixed costs related to the trash hauling contract going up a certain fixed percentage by design. A few, an increase for our Anything Goes program, we switched to using predominantly contractors last year for that service. And we are trying to break out some additional costs that hadn't been budgeted in the past. So there's just a little more definition in your budget breakdown. But hopefully, nothing too surprising.
Just kind of back to the sticker note, Brian, does the budget include for stickers for the upcoming and the staff costs and such in order to packet those and mail them?
That's the $3,000. So it takes care of all of that. Questions or concerns on solid waste?
Not about the budget, but about the, and I know it'll come up in probably April or May, but just think about, it was said early on that there'll be a nominal fee per sticker for future. I mean, I'll go on record, I said it back then. I think additional stickers should still be free. It served its purpose to keep residents being the people that are putting the trash on the curb side. And Irving is not a town that needs to offset our trash cost at the cost of residents buying even for nominal fees. There's not, it's more of an inconvenience and we're not really going to get a bang for our buck at 50 cents a sticker, 25 cents a sticker, a dollar a sticker, whatever, you know, somebody comes up with a dollar amount. So I would just say when we do address that, because these are going to run out. Oh, we only got about, sent out about nine months' worth of anticipated stickers?
We will be providing more for July 1.
For July 1. So just as we, as we approach that, just to keep in mind that if people are using more than those, I think the sticker program served its purpose in reducing the cost that we wanted. And I don't see any reason to add a cost to the residents after we've seen the improvements that we wanted to see. Doesn't affect the budget now, but just for future conversation, I wanted to make sure I threw that out there.
I'd be curious as we get close to closing the fiscal year on what, if we've seen any residents come in, because I think we had even, do we provide, refresh my memory, Brian, do we provide three and allow for a fourth?
You instructed us to send two, enough for two per week home. So we did that.
Okay.
There's a third per week allocated for Irving residents. And some, a handful of households have obtained those. We're keeping track of all of that. So we have that data when you want it.
Maybe as we get closer to the close of the fiscal year.
Right.
As we get ready to issue for the next year and talk through that data.
But at this point, most households have not requested any additional stickers. They're still working off what was sent home.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
One question, Brian, did our trash hauling company need to increase the trucks this weekend?
Don't, I don't have the information from Friday yet. I should probably have it by tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest. But I know the collection right after, the collection right after Christmas, no, before Christmas, was right on track. It was actually a little bit on the lower side. So this potentially could have been the higher one, but I didn't get any complaints about, about the weight of material. So I think it was within reason, but I should have that by Wednesday.
There was two trucks this past week.
Was there?
Yeah, I think I wonder what's separate just for the cardboard.
Are you talking about my house? That was a month's worth, I missed the last one. Okay, any others? Okay, thank you, Brian. So it wraps up solid waste. Any other questions, comments on '23 operating budget for tonight? Okay. Want to move on to the STM warrant draft? So the board has been reviewing an STM warrant draft for, I guess, late winter. Hopefully it's late winter, I don't know when winter's actually starting, but... And we have a variety of articles in that draft, and so wanted to review it because we've made a few changes since our last review, and then also with the FinCom here to get any feedback, particularly on the financial articles. Kind of starting from the top, we have prior year expenses for FY21. So there's five prior year bills there to, to get cleared up. Then Article 2 proposed is appropriation for general stabilization. This is to move the last payment, this is the last payment, correct?
That's the last payment we received from the MBLC.
Yep. This is the last library grant payment from the MBLC of $544,030 back to general stabilization. Article 3 is also to move the balance in the Public Library Photovoltaic Solar Array Special Article back to stabilization, which we talked a little bit about earlier when we were talking about the borrowing of $170,933.49. After Article 3 are the public ways that we've been discussing. So there's the Care Drive. There's Public Works Boulevard. The Highland, obviously, we are going to do some further investigation and clarify those resident concerns before that one goes forward. Although hopefully that's accurate as written. And then Pleasant Street. Following that, we have the Mosquito Control District. There has been, there was some discussion this year about mosquito control that's done by the state. Some attempts stopped out, some, I believe that was denied. And so then one way to potentially allow the town and other towns near us to take alternative steps for mosquito control is to form the, be part of this district that's going to then act and likely get the approval of the state as a district as opposed to just a town asking to opt out. So there is a fee to be part of that first year here. So that would be getting into that. Next is regarding property, so authorizing disposition of 17 Moore Street. So this would be an authorization to allow the select board to potentially take some action with the former public library. There were requests when the Pleasant Street School went out for a proposal that they'd be, you know, potentially interested in both lots and, you know, doing something in both. And so we said we would consider them, not making any decision on them at that time, but obviously we'd need authorization to take action on that property. So this would give us that authorization, which we already have on Pleasant Street. Pratt Street, this is a small easement to allow us the ability to service the traffic crossing signals that were put in. They are just right on the edge of the layout, and this allows us to have enough area with an easement to properly maintain that device. And then zoning law proposals, and we are discussing these further after as well. If the Finance Committee would like to, we can come back to it after. But being it's not a financial article, I don't know if that would be something that the Finance Committee is concerned with taking a position on. And... It's long sections. Yes, go on.
Those traffic crossings are actually on the next street. Particular property that we need to submit in is Pratt Street.
Right on the corner. The property address is Pratt.
Oh, the property address.
Of the area we need an easement on. Right, right.
Right about what?
Sorry, thank you for clarifying, the crossing isn't Crossing Pratt. But the crossing is on the Two Pratt property. The easement is. And that is it for, well, that's not it. And then there was the discussion earlier about whether or not we would potentially want to add another $10,000 to the cemetery expenses line for the current fiscal year to allow for gravestone repair this year. Because we will not have, those expenses will be allocated to software this year, so. And we do have free cash available to do that with. Correct?
It is correct when we pull up the notes.
That's our certified free cash? It's higher than it's been lately.
Let's put a few more articles on there.
No, I'm looking at that going, we're going to need every penny with all the projects coming up, so. I think Capital Planning will be happy to see that number. Might support the idea of paying the library off next year as well, back to stabilization or something. So it gives us some, hopefully some flexibility. Okay, so that was kind of high level three of the articles in the STM. Basically, it's the first, the first three, and then... Eight, technically maybe nine are other, you know, financially related articles, but I welcome any questions, comments from the FinCom on all of them. And if there's a recommendation to add another one for the cemetery or not.
I think it's reasonable to ask people, put an IFL on, ask people if they'd like to spend $10,000 to continue in restoration or have a nicer looking cemetery. I just want to let it carry rate.
To me, one reason for asking for it here is the software program that we're working on that the money we typically would spend is kind of going to a debt. So, you know, do you want to, you know, have a nicer looking cemetery and clean it up or not? It's their money, they can do what they want with it, but I think it's reasonable to ask.
I think I hear a motion.
I've moved that we had $10,000, a tackle for $10,000 to continue the restoration of the cemetery.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we interested in entertaining? I'm sorry? Yes, sir.
Are we giving a special article, or are you asking for an article that would amend the Public Works budget? The language I have to draft is very different.
I know. Can I, Brian may not like this, but can I encourage that we just increase the expenses for the year? Because that's where we've normally been drawing it from rather than a special article? Does that work? That's probably longer, I'm sorry, but, okay. Are we interested in entertaining and adding to the STM?
Yes.
Okay. We are in agreement.
I will draft that review for both boards to review next week.
Excellent. Just going back through those, any questions or comments on any of them that are in the proposal? Okay. Well, then if there is no other questions or concerns about the STM, do we, did you propose a date? Did we propose a date? No, okay. We're revisiting road, we should, we should talk about a date if we're ready. I know we need to revisit one road layout. And we still have some planning discussion to finalize what those look like. But we won't come back to decide on the road layout until at least the 24th. Are we thinking sometime in February?
Up to the 7th of June.
Yeah, I'd say yes, sooner or better.
Okay. We'll have to discuss a little bit about format and layout. I don't know where we'll be at in terms of COVID and other factors at that point.
Last March when we did this, we did a...
Drive-in?
Yes, we did.
We did.
The drive-in.
We did drive-in style, not at the drive-in. We were sitting, but we were sitting outside.
Correct.
At the, in the school.
And we used a FM tuner so that people could sit in their cars and listen. And we used a FM tuner so that people could sit in their cars and listen to their radio in their car.
We gave them voting signs.
People had voting signs.
It was pretty warm in my truck, so.
I can assure you, it's not so warm sitting at the table.
In my truck.
I think we can, we can, we can sort out what that looks like as we get closer, but.
Maybe it can't involve the heaters for us throwing up.
What?
No heaters.
What?
I remember a heater when I was getting my booster at the school.
You know, given the, the work that may still need to happen on some of the items, I would prefer to push it back a couple of weeks into the mid to later part of February. I don't think anything on there, another two weeks is gonna affect anything.
Yeah.
Just to give a little extra time in case there's other items to work on.
Am I hearing a Saturday or a weekday? If it's drive-up, we probably want to do a Saturday morning.
Yeah, I would think Saturday.
You're gonna need daylight, so it's gonna have to be.
Okay. We'll tentatively look for a Saturday in the last couple of weeks of February, then, and see what makes sense.
After the, many of the public schools have break that last section of February and can go away, those weekends bookending it, so you might just want to keep that in mind when you're scheduling it.
So maybe that's March 6th.
I was gonna say maybe the very first Saturday of March?
Yeah, March 6th, or March 5th, I'm sorry, I'm on Sundays, but yeah. Okay, Brian, you and I can look a little closer at how that aligns with other things like school, and we'll come back next week with a proposed date.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you all.
So, we're gonna continue the STM discussion later this evening for the board, once we post our planning zoning discussion. But in terms of joint business with the Finance Committee, I believe that wraps it unless you all have anything for us.
No.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the Finance Committee at 9:25.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all, we'll see you next Monday. We'll come back to regular business, we'll continue with our joint meetings. I don't believe we have a form of the planning board here tonight, so it'll be just the board discussing it, reviewing feedback from the 1216 public hearing regarding proposed zoning amendments. And this kind of ties into what's in the STM, so hence, let's hear that before we kind of move forward.
Second report out, the planning board held the public hearing on December 16th. We followed the format that we had used before to advertise and announce the public hearing. There were a few members of the public who attended, and this specifically was to focus on the proposal to amend the use table for two-family being allowed by right in, in all zones, and multi-unit being allowed in all zones by special permit. And there was also the recommendation to alter the definition of multi-unit, to remove a cap of four. And so those are the, the two items that were in consideration. I know your warrant has four items, the other two were dealt with at a previous public hearing in November. So there's definitely a lot of debate and a lot of question about the, the reason for the suggested amendments, and whether or not it was appropriate in all zones. And so a lot of the questions focused on what kind of developments, there's definitely concern about how large a development may be proposed, and whether or not the zoning bylaw should maintain a cap, or whether or not having that discretion in the planning board to set the special permit conditions was appropriate. And there was also some conversation about when it would be preferred to have these zoning amendments presented at a town meeting, whether a special town meeting or an annual town meeting was appropriate. I think that was most of the public feedback that we received.
There was also, so when we sent this out, there was some feedback from the planning board chair, which I believe was, in addition to what Brian said, I believe this, you know, following that, in the discussion that we were going to discuss this tonight, believe it was his opinion, it's not that of the planning board, though I was waiting on clarification when he said he could not attend, just for the board's understanding. He noted that this should be voted on, he believes this should be voted on at an annual town meeting when more people are there. He would support a limit for each district by special permit, like 50/50, question mark four, assume that is a number of units in the special permit. I don't know if you know what that means, it's just numbers.
That was my understanding of what he was trying to communicate, but it.
By districts, and it doesn't show what districts, but assuming in the pattern of the use table, or the permit table. And then a comment that he would recommend adding size of units, like 500 to 1,500 square So, there's a couple things. The board obviously proposed these, and if I'm correct, Brian, it's the latter two articles in the STM, right?
Correct.
Just if we want to, you want to pull up what those were.
Pull it back up.
It was amending the use table for two on page 19 of the warrant, and.
Correct.
Is it the zoning map one is the last?
Is it the other one? No, zoning map was what you discussed at your other meeting.
PDU, yeah, the PUD.
So, page 13 and page 19.
Is it 13? Okay, thank you. 13 was the definitions.
Correct.
That's the multi-unit versus, yeah.
Correct.
So, we proposed this, and part of the basis for the request to change the permit was due to the Pleasant Street School property, and that we expect that that, those proposals would potentially be housing in excess of three units, which I believe is what, is the current zoning. And so we had asked the planning board to consider that, and so they held the hearing, and obviously, this was the feedback. Well, this is a couple things, one is, you know, where do, where does the board go from here? We do have the ability to still put on the STM if we want, there's implications of that, we can talk through the details and possibilities. It doesn't sound like the planning board came back with any recommendations on modifications from that hearing. You know, Deb is on the planning board, she's here, if you want to add anything, feel free. You know, so do we consider some, any changes to what we've requested, what would that do? How does this impact what we're doing with the Pleasant Street School? And do we, you know, all those variables, I guess, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions there. So I don't know where the board's thoughts are right now on.
So there's a, there's a couple of issues, there's the, like you just said, the timing, the definition, and the table, right? Those are the three. The table is, is about the, the change in language to, from, from not allowed to allowed by special permit.
If I may clarify, Brian, there was no concern about the terms, the definitions, right? From any feedback, I don't believe?
The concern about the definition was specifically multi-unit.
Okay.
Removing the cap completely.
I gotcha.
I believe the discussion centered around whether or not there should just be an amended cap or no capital. Your current recommendation didn't include a cap, and so there was some conversation back and forth, but there was no, to your earlier point, there was no formal recommendation from the planning board, I believe they're carrying the topic to their next agenda in
So, the easiest one, for me anyways, is the timing of it. I had stated at the last meeting, when we discussed it, that I was in favor of doing it at the annual town meeting, but deferred to people saying that they thought special town meeting, based on historical, I think it was brought up that 100%, or a high, a high 90-something percent of all of the zoning changes, looking back at when they were done, were done at a special, but I know this is not the first time I've brought this up, I brought it up the previous time I was on the board about concerns of people maybe changing that and moving it to a, moving those type of things to annual, we typically get more people, so that stance hasn't changed. I did defer because the majority of the people at the time, a couple of weeks ago, or almost a month ago, seems like forever ago, had said that specials seem to be the practice and the, the normal operation. So I would defer back to my original stand, saying I'm, I'm in favor of moving it to the annual. It also gives us more time to work through any of the other, not much really, a few weeks extra by the time postings and everything happen, but it gives a few more weeks to, to work on any language changes that we may have, especially since we're waiting for language coming back from planning and, and any other concerns. So, that's the first one, and I'll, I'll stop there while I gather the rest of my thoughts.
I don't, I don't share your opinion about where it should be on the annual or not, I probably said this before, but I think we go out of our way to, you know, beyond duly war on our citizens, and when, at least in my experience as a resident and as a board member in some capacity, when it's an issue that people feel strongly about one way or another, they will show up, whether it's a special or not, so that doesn't, that piece of it doesn't concern me. In terms of time, I, I understand a little more time to sort it out. Do we know when the planning board is meeting next?
Not till the 3rd, Thursday of January.
I guess I'll, I'll just go on record, I'm disappointed they're waiting a month to come back to it when there's a, you know, something pressing, and I don't know what the timeline is, it on the, I don't know if there's any time restrictions on the request, I know it's a, it's a process that's defined, and so we should look at that, I know there's some time bounds in there, I don't know if we're up against any of those. I don't have concerns about them wanting to review and come back with, you know, amended recommendations, I think that's, that's the purpose of the planning board, is to hear the feedback and weigh in on, on their expertise, but. I think that was, and not to not continue, but that was kind of the summary of what you said, that's kind of my opinion. I don't, I don't know where you are on the timing piece, and.
I listened to the planning board meeting that evening, it was quite, quite interesting. As, as, as far as a special or an annual, I'm in favor of doing it as special as opposed to an annual, I think it's, it's, it's too long and it's too complicated for an annual meeting, and with, with budget and other issues that we're going to deal with on annual. And haven't been around here for decades, people come out when they want to come out, whether it's a special or an annual, and if there are, if it's issues that they're concerned about, they will come out. So, I think as much as we, as, the more that we can get, get through before the annual, the better off we'll be.
And I'll just say, just part of the planning board's strategy with using an STM is these articles can be very in-depth, our marijuana bylaw was about eight or nine pages. We have seen, just as a resident at an annual town meeting, where the topics come up, and as soon as the topic I'm interested in passes or is voted on, I leave. And so we've seen, you know, kind of that mass exodus happen, so unfortunately, planning articles are usually held to the end of the warrant, so by the time our articles actually come up, there is just a dozen people left in the audience. This also, having them at an STM gives people plenty of time to have questions asked and answered, and you can kind of get really in-depth with stuff, where at an annual, by the time you've sat through budget, whatever other projects, capital and all that, people are burned out and tired, and so questions that people have, they may choose not to ask, or answers may be very, very rushed, and so it just seems to be a much better format. I will say, with our last two public hearings, we actually mailed postcards home to all the residents, and for the first time in a long time that I can remember, we had attendance. So that's fantastic, I was thrilled, I mean, it wasn't, it was just a handful of people, but that definitely seemed to work and generate some interest, so that is something that I know I will suggest to our chair as we go forward with public hearings, to continue that, because it definitely seemed to help get the word out and get people in attendance.
Did you want to add something, Mark?
Yeah, sure, thank you for your conversation on the topic, and I appreciate what Scott has to say about the annual town meeting, actually, I appreciate what all of you have to say. Deb is right, I have sat here for over three hours just for this point, just to hear this probably 10-minute conversation. I've been going to town meetings for, I don't know, 30 years, and people do turn out at the annual town meeting in much, much, much greater numbers, and this is kind of a bigger deal. There's a lot of changes to our zoning regs that are being recommended. I totally get the concept of make a special town meeting that is just really focused just on that, completely understand that. And I agree, Bill, I think that if people have issues, they will come out to that, but you're still having just a, a small fraction of the town, town voters that show up to these special town meetings. Everybody, well, everybody is going to show up to something, they show up to the annual town meeting, and if we're talking about sitting outside in our cars in February or March, I think your, your, your numbers are going to be even lower. I think that if you wait on this until annual town meeting, especially in the day of COVID, we are going to, you're gonna have more people have a voice, and right now, it feels like it will be a small voice. You guys know, special town meeting, I've been, years ago when I was on the assessors, we would be calling people in town, can you show up so we can have a quorum? I suspect that won't be the case for this, but the point being, an annual town meeting gets, gives a lot more voice to people in town. So, I appreciate all your thoughts, but I agree with Scott on this, and we hope that you guys would change your mind on that. Also, I would like to note that, let's see, what was I gonna say about the planning board? Yeah, I was at that meeting, and, and Brian had asked if the planning board had a recommendation, and they did not, and they were gonna wait until the next meeting, gonna do some research, and I think that was wise to find out more information before they make a recommendation, and it seems like if you ask the planning board for a recommendation on this, you ought to wait until the planning board gives some feedback, and, because I know that you said one of the possible ways to go was you could just make that decision on your own. Not that you're saying you would, but you said that's a possibility, if I understood that correctly, but it seems like you would want to wait for the planning board, maybe the planning board would even, who knows, maybe they need to do more research, I don't know. So, just figured I would share that. And, oh, and I have a question, clarifying question. Jake, you were talking about time constraints, and I didn't follow that, I apologize if I didn't understand, you were saying that we're under, maybe I misunderstood, you were talking about some kind of time limits or something you're trying to work by, and I'd appreciate you clarifying that, too.
Sure. Thank you for your feedback and thoughts and question. In terms of the annual, I'll just, I'll just add, obviously, I haven't been to as many as you gentlemen have, but getting 10, 12 under my belt myself, 14, geez, maybe. Not to call it anything specific, but many years I've watched after the school budget, two-thirds of the attendance disappear, and we are sometimes, the moderator jokes about maintaining quorum, so I, I understand what you're saying about quorum, even in the annual, I've seen that, so. Fair points about February and March, the weather and COVID and all those challenges, don't know that we won't have those challenges in the summer. Hopefully, we won't, but at the moment, or in May, yeah, I won't project where we are, hopefully, we're better. Hopefully we're better. In terms of the second point, I was merely trying to illustrate options, as you said, not presume a direction where the board would move on their own, but it is an option. I think it was probably highlighted during that discussion, but a developer could come in and supersede all our zoning because we don't have sufficient low-income housing and other requirements. So they could come in and get a waiver from the state and avoid that with, I believe it's a 40B process. So there is other, I'm sorry?
For properties that they own, not town-owned properties, correct. They couldn't get a waiver from the state if we own the property and don't sell that to them.
Fair, fair.
Yeah.
Fair. But a property, any property, that, in general, I'm not referring to a specific property for that. And it's just things to be aware of, that's all. No, that's okay. Understand your concern and it's understandable. The last one, the timing, and I meant to add this when I was saying about when to do this. And it isn't something we have to do, but we put out the request for the Pleasant Street School to the public for proposals for, you know, doing something with that property, putting back on tax rolls, et cetera. We have extended that deadline a few times because of issues that have come up. One of those issues is that the zoning doesn't allow for, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but it was an oversight on our office, on our part, that the, that is in.
VR.
VR. And currently, multifamily is only allowed in CV, in the current zoning. And so because that's in VR, they're restricted to two-family, which doesn't necessarily align with the potential proposals. I know the board felt that that building lent, and that neighborhood lent more to a housing development versus a commercial development, et cetera. So, you know, we have some weighting in our rubric that would lean towards favorable for a housing proposal. Likely, it's probably going to be a proposal that exceeds two units. So from a timing standpoint, that is something that we should be aware of, that impacts that process that we started. If we don't have a zoning change in place or scheduled, when we get to the point of closing that and reviewing the proposals. So it's something to be aware of. It doesn't mean that we can't wait. It doesn't mean that we can't say, we're going to consider them for, you know, review post-annual town meeting when we expect to make, you know, potentially make a zoning change. But that's what I meant about timing. We've, has it been open for 120 days now?
At least.
At least. So we'd expected to have been closed already. We've had some other things. This came up where we, it was an oversight on our part that it wasn't in, you know, CV like we thought. So it's literally like the one parcel that's not. So initial discussions of the board a few weeks ago, when we put together this request to the planning board, was one of those options was do we change the zoning of that parcel to CV instead of VR? So there's different options that were on the table at the time. This is the one that we presented to the planning board as our, as our request, our thoughts. So hopefully that clarifies the timeline piece.
Yeah, I figured it had to do with some kind of project you were trying to accomplish. I didn't know it was specifically that, so I appreciate that. I would like to mention, I don't know what I'm going to say, just talk about, it was mentioned at the public hearing by Brian and here by you again, that if the town did not pass this, make these changes, that a developer could come in and really effectively do whatever they want because we don't have zoning for more than three or four multi-unit dwellings. And it appears that the only interest of any developers, at least from what I have seen from the request for information back in December and November, were for the IP mill for 60-plus units and for the Pleasant Street School, which are both town-owned properties. So I guess what I was trying to say earlier when I rudely interrupted you, my apologies again, is that I think that's a moot point, that I haven't heard about any developers, certainly not in the paper or anywhere else, developers looking to come here and develop open space to put in large developments. What they're looking to do is redo buildings that are already here. And the only two that I am aware of, and I could completely be wrong, are town-owned properties. So I don't think they could come in and request a waiver from the state if we own the properties. So I feel like that, the way that was presented, how shall I say it? I don't know. It isn't accurate. It's as if we're saying, or not we, it's as if it's being presented that we better pass this or we're going to have no control here. No, we already have control because those buildings are town-owned. So I just wanted to, I don't know what you guys feel about that, but that is something that I wanted to express.
I'll speak for myself and then the rest chime in. I don't, I came across that way, I don't think that's what, at least that I was trying to convey. I don't know the exact nuance of how someone who, a developer proposing a 40B when we were requesting a proposal on a property, whether we owned it or not, whether they could get favorable standing, whether the state would have any say. I don't know the nuance of that. We hopefully don't ever have to explore that. That doesn't preclude any other property that someone owns that meets the requirements needed to go through that process couldn't happen. And I guess for me, just because something hasn't happened and we don't know that anyone's trying to do it, doesn't mean it wouldn't. You know, I'll pull from stuff other people have brought up, the marijuana bylaw. We put in a moratorium because we were worried someone might, not because we knew someone would or was trying to. I think about what, you know, members of the FinCom, you know, not to pick on Dan, he's not here, but, you know, he's often said at many a meeting, we need to protect the largest taxpayer and that asset to the town, the work that the town went through many years ago to ensure that after deregulation and stuff, that money didn't go back to the state, it continued to come to the town. That could still happen again. We're all aware of it. We acknowledge that the risk is there. It doesn't mean we assume it's going to. Then that's all I was trying to convey, at least when I said it. The risk is there. It doesn't mean that there is a potential active threat, but we should be aware. And if we can take action to ensure that we are putting the town in the best position to have some control or be able to have some say in a process, we should. I mean, I feel like that's our duty. So, and I think you wanted to chime in.
I was just going to say, there is, and I'll call it out there, we do have a property that fits this. It's Renovator Supply, who could easily decide to sell at any moment and to a developer that, you know, for a dollar and say, I'm done, I'm walking away. And without any other regulations, they absolutely, or the current owner, has the right to go in and say, I'm going to forego 40B, I'm going to utilize 40B and do whatever I want because you don't have enough. And that could happen. So that's somebody that's, regardless of what we do as a town with the two properties that we would like to dispose of, that's just one property that I thought of. There's others that have enough space and capacity to sell their land to a developer and circumvent our current bylaws. So there are enough landowners in town that could do that. And with the price of properties now, if I was a landowner and I had the ability to sell, I would probably want to take advantage of that and move on and find somebody who's chomping at the bit to build as well. So it, while we're talking about two properties that we are looking to get back on the tax rolls, it is not all-inclusive of those are the only two options in town. So that's just a couple of other options. The stance of the town currently owns, and I've said this publicly, I don't think the town should be in a position of owning property just to keep it from being utilized by somebody else. We're not landlords, we're not property owners in the sense of keeping blighted, unused properties. The cost to the town, and disregard the income that we would get for a tax roll, the cost of upkeep and maintenance to the blighted IP mill and the risk of, for officers responding for, we've had numerous, you know, fires in there that people have had to go and put out. We've had, police have had to go through that. You could probably over the years, you know, back as a sergeant and now chief, talk about the number of calls that have come in for people breaking into that building, we, you know. So to keep that as is in order to not have it change hands into a developer, that doesn't, that doesn't sit well with me. I would rather look at what's coming in and figure out, does it fit Irving? And get the property back out and used and, you know, and have some effective use of it and mitigate the issues that we have with it. Now, whether that, if you go back to what we all talked about before the RFI went out, not one of us thought we were going to get back proposals for residential. All of us had discussed numerous times going, well, we'll get some sort of commercial mixed use with industrial and we go back to the, I think it was Weston, no, Tyne-Bon years ago who gave us and said, you know, here's some potentials, you could tear down all the buildings, you could leave these two, here's all your proposals, but, you know, your builders are going to want commercial industrial. Okay. And that's what we had intentioned. So when we put out the RFI, our thought, and we even said, when we're creating the RFPs, before we ever created the one for Pleasant Street and before we ever created the RFI for IP mill, was, well, our thought was Pleasant Street, it's a, that's a residential neighborhood, that should stay as residences. That doesn't make sense to put anything other than residences in there. But IP mill, that leads more towards commercial mixed use. So that's where we left it. That's where we thought things were going and for the last five years, that's what people thought was going to happen. We only had those two and the question I asked a few weeks ago was, is there other interests? And I don't really have the answer to that. So my question is still out there. Are there other developers that are interested? So not knowing that, we're trying to create, craft an RFP that says it is advantageous for all developers to take a look at that parcel, no matter what you think you want to develop. Personally, I'm not, I talked about it at the last meeting, I'm not opposed to a mixed use with residential. I think the chief had talked about, you know, there would be, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, it might have been somebody else, chief, I apologize. There was a discussion from somebody saying that, you know, there are services that will, thank you. There are services that will, thank you, Bill. And he's right. And I concurred with him, saying that while there are services that will, the need for services and the use of services will increase, the school included, police, fire, the amount of, you know, water, wastewater, all of it, all the services, well, they'll be impacted in some way, shape or form. This is a multi-year process to order, in order to build into that. And I think we have capacity in our town to look at that and say, we can sustain a model of commercial industrial, we can also sustain a model of residential commercial or residential industrial, you know, any three of the mixed use. Personally, I would not want to see any one of them, my two cents, going with a single stream component. I would like to see mixed use, just because of the nature of where it is. I think, you know, commercial might sit well in there, you know, you see things crop up all the time. You could nestle back some light industrial in the back or the whole thing, you know, industrial with a small commercial in the front or residential. And I'm not afraid of any of them. I think they all present their own advantages and challenges and they all have to be looked at in that way. So I wasn't limiting it to any one of them. So that was my stance on that.
I appreciate your thoughts and certainly, you know, you mentioned the Renovators Supply building that's been there for, I don't know, my lifetime. And it's always been the same use. So yes, that could potentially change, but there are no plans for that. We do have plans that request for people that do want to develop. So these are actual ones that are out there. And I agree with you, blighted properties are a pain and it is so lovely that these old mills and these companies leave them to the town to take care of. It is not unlike what happened with Irving Paper Mill at the Usher plant. And boy, you know, where they lauded as wonderful, you know, business folks for what happened with the park after it was all done. But that was after the town took ownership of it and had to pay the demolition costs and take care of everything, much like what's happening here. Thankfully, we got the grants, not of what you wanted, and a lot of that blight is going to be taken down. So I appreciate that. But I would also add that there is a significant difference of cash flow that comes to the town from a commercial, more specifically an industrial property, as opposed to the cash, for lack of a better phrase, cash suck from residential dwellings. My three kids who went through Irving Elementary School and through Terrence Falls High School, you are, you are not going to get the taxes out of me that paid for their education until well after I'm dead and gone. The cost per student at Irving Elementary right now is $26,500 per student. So in theory, if there were 60 units to go into, you know, in theory down at IP, say there were just 30 students, we're talking $800,000 to the school. That is a huge amount to the school. Also, 30 kids would be an increase of 24% of the total students at that school. And these are, that might be a lower number. Now, this is a much bigger discussion, maybe this is a discussion at annual town meeting or other things, but know that if, you know, anytime residences come in, if there's kids involved, which most residences have, the payback, it's like 70 years for to educate one kid at our tax rate. So it is, it is a loss and that could, you know, the finance committee would be very, I would think would be interested in this and have an opinion on that as well. So hopefully other recommendations come back for an industrial commercial use. My two cents.
If I could, just to, I agree with a lot of what you said, except for the financial piece. The, and I based my number off of your 24%. I'm assuming we have somewhere around 125 students? 134. Several years ago, I think we were around 160, which means the capacity is there without having to increase service-related costs. So it's a, it's a misnomer to say that bringing in 30 more students would mean that it's an automatic increase of $800,000 to the budget because the budget's already at around $3.5 million, which should sustain 160, 165 students. I know that from my seven years on the school committee and how we crafted those budgets, there should be enough capacity in there to do that. Now, and I said this a few weeks ago on December 13th, that's the only budget that I think should be able to sustain that. Now, there is some other, some additional pieces. Should they come in with special needs? Should there, you know, be other, I completely understand that those are costs that are not directly associated with the current budget. Those are standalone costs that come in. I get that. I've been there, I've sat in those seats, I've looked at those budget numbers. So that's something that would come into consideration when we're talking about this. What does that look like? What's the impact? The other departments, you would see an increase of service calls for police. You would see an increase of medical calls with more families. So those things I understand, but I also think that we have the capacity to work ourselves into a position in three to five years to handle those, whether that means increased staffing, whether that, you know, whatever that looks like, we can have that conversation and sustain that. So I don't think any of those potential changes or, you know, in services are insurmountable that the town of Irving could not work towards ensuring that services don't drop based on more residents in town. So I think we're in a unique position where we do have the capacity. One thing I'd like to say is, and I know the treasurer, Ms. Ikorn, had mentioned this earlier when she was here, one of our rating detriments is that we are top-heavy with one stream of income. And so we are not very diverse in what we have coming in. So, you know, we said several years ago, we would love to see the town of Irving diversify our portfolio to see multiple strain, you know, forms of income coming in and not lean heavily on one taxpayer to pay our 85%. This isn't going to, you know, one developer coming in to do one property here, one property there, isn't going to mitigate that, but we have to start somewhere. We're not going to come in and say, let's hold all these properties and sell all of them at once to get us to 50/50. That, that'll never happen. You do it one property at a time and you do it one, you know, one change at a time. So I'm in favor of the changes. I don't have an issue with them, but I just wanted to address some of those points.
Sure, and no doubt, if that place down the road goes out. Sure, and no doubt, if that place down the road goes out, Rob's not here, I'm probably not here, you know, next door, we're just not going to afford anything. So I appreciate that 100%, that you're talking about diversifying our income stream, for sure. So that's, that's appreciated as well. And certainly, while I was thinking, I don't even know, I mean, these are nonprofits that have made proposals to come in, I don't even know if nonprofits are taxable. So when you talk about an income stream, all the nonprofits I've ever known about, hospitals, whatnot, churches, they're, they're not taxable. Certainly nonprofits are trying to provide service, so they're nonprofit for a reason and they receive those benefits. Something to look into, and I liked your idea, Scott, about talking about the school and being able to handle the capacity, and I think that would be worth, you know, having a conversation with the school committee and the administration, because they're, you know, they're the ones that put that budget together.
They'll be here, I think, next week.
February.
February, yep, yep.
I'll just add briefly and then try to focus back on the zoning, not that it's not great conversation, but it'll continue and it's more specific to this, rather than some of the bigger picture developments, potentials. I think that we need to also just take a long view at where is the town of Irving going, and we should not be afraid of change, we should be strategic about how the town changes and that it meets the, the needs and wishes of the citizens and also keeps it viable going forward. And, you know, part of that obviously is diversifying our tax base, but again, we're never going to do that probably to the level that we'd like to with, with what we have. But I think we also need to understand that we have deficiencies, we have entire populations that would like to remain in Irving, I mean, you know, I'm going the other end of the scale where tech and senior housing, right? And, and that doesn't exist, we don't have those options for people. So I do think we need to be sure that we're taking a holistic view on what, what are the challenges the town has and which ones can we strategically address? Some of them will bring more cost, but is that in the best interest of the town overall for the long term? It may be. We do that every budget season, we do that in every investment that we're doing, right? We're spending more money on something because we believe it's better for the long term, usually. Sometimes it's the short term, but, so, I completely agree residential does bring cost, it doesn't necessarily offset itself with the tax base. That doesn't mean it's not something you should do. So that's, I'm not saying that that's the only option or the direction we should go, but we should consider it, right? And just to add to what Scott said, when we were going through the RFI and moving towards the RFP for the IP Mill, the biggest thing that we've all discussed and focused on is how do we write a rubric that does not give any untoward advantage to commercial, industrial, or residential? So they can't, we can grade them all equally, and we can weight some of the other values higher and help us make the best decision possible, so, in that property. In terms of renovators, they're not just doing what they used to do, I'm not saying they're in housing or mixed, you know, in that kind of thing, but they're there. I'm not saying that they are doing other things specific to housing, but they are doing lots of different things. So that property and its uses have changed, they might still be within the same terminology, but it's definitely evolved and continues to, so, to what, who knows?
Can I just say one thing about renovators?
Yes.
Every time it gets discussed in this capacity, it gives momentum to this rumor going around. There is no known plans, the Planning Board knows of, for anything happening at Renovators Supply. It is a privately-owned property that the town has no control over. There is a, I believe Mark mentioned it at the, you know, at the town of Irving public hearing, there's a wicked, wicked rumor that 50,000 units are going in down there.
I didn't mention that about renovators. And I didn't bring it up tonight, Scott brought it up.
I thought you did at our public hearing, that something about renovators, so...
That was Moonlight brought up.
Okay. Sorry, wrong person. This has come up a couple times at Planning Board hearings, so I just want to make it really clear, the Planning Board knows nothing, to the best of our knowledge, there's no plans, and it's a privately-owned property, so there is...
Correct.
And the board doesn't either, know of any...
Correct.
Just for the record.
The reason I brought that up is because it's privately owned, we wouldn't know about it. They would do that on their own, they would be working on their own sale, they would be working on their own development stuff, they wouldn't need to come to the town at all. We have no idea, anybody that owns property, you know, the SEMs could decide that, you know, there's no more money in doing storage, and we want to get rid of the storage and we want to put up, you know, a high-rise apartment building, or we want to put up, you know, whatever. So there's, there is land and space, was my point, that is privately owned, not publicly owned.
Oh yeah, there's 50 acres just between Mark and I, so...
Yeah.
And there's two sizable parcels just in our neighborhood.
Private, private land, you know. So I, that was my point, is that it's not all publicly owned.
It's like, squashed, the renovators...
Absolutely. I didn't bring them up because I wanted to give, you know, credence to any, you know, any rumors that are out there, I have no knowledge of any of that either. I was just simply naming them as a large parcel of, you know, with a big building on it that, as a private owner, could do whatever they want with it.
So bringing it back to where we are, I, I don't, you know, I think there was a comment about waiting to hear back from Planning Board, and I don't have any concern with that. They're going to meet before our 24th meeting, and we're going to have some feedback hopefully on the road layout that we're waiting on to finalize as well, so, you know, we can revisit whether these two articles for zoning are ready. Obviously, the other two have already been done, and we know they are.
Right.
Whether or not these are at a point where we feel, everyone feels comfortable bringing them forward or not, for the special. I think we, is there any feedback we want to provide back to the Planning Board for their next meeting? Is one, you know, is there any changes from what we've heard that we want to recommend? I had a question, Mark, if we, I think one of the, one of the areas of question or concern was, is it special permit in every zone or not? So if we, if the Planning Board recommended, let's say, special permit in only two out of the four zones and not all, does that require another public hearing, because it's less of a change than the one already proposed?
I believe so.
It still would require another, okay. So potentially, any action that they do, unless we moved it forward without a public hearing, again, back to just the possibilities, would probably eliminate it from being in a March special, just timing-wise, we wouldn't probably be able to get it done.
Better than with council.
Okay. So, we can come back if there's any feedback for the Planning Board that we'd like to give, but the other one is, what do we do about our RFP for Pleasant Street? In terms of where that's at? Because at this point, we don't have any ETA or know when or if, that zoning will be different than it is today.
So I think we've addressed this a couple of times, we've asked, we've bumped it out, what, twice now? Or at least once. This will be the second one, if we, if we bump it out again. The same logic still applies in my mind, if there is unknowns, the developers have been waiting for this property for a number of years, well, I don't want to say a number of years, but since it's become vacant, I don't think bumping it out again and putting out an addendum, as long as we're within the timeline that allows us to complete the process without having to start over again.
Agreed.
I don't think there's any detriment to moving it back one more time.
If we're moving it back, are we talking May, June? I mean, that's, that's what it's sounding like if everybody's leaning, if we don't even know if we're going to have everything in order for a special.
Unless we are, so there was some oversight on our part of saying that we thought that this was zoned, to be able to do that. So without having those items addressed and corrected to make sure that we can go forward, it doesn't make sense to start opening bids if we can't act on them. And it doesn't make sense to ask a bidder to give us a bid on something that may not be able to be done. So at a minimum, if the decision is to put it on a special, we would have to extend it out beyond the special to allow for the decision to be made of whether or not these changes are voted on, or approved, they will be voted on, but whether or not they're approved. If the decision is to move it out to an annual, then we'd have to bump it back that much further to make sure that those decisions are made. We can't move forward opening up bids if we don't know that the bids that we're opening could even be completed.
We could open, we couldn't make a decision, but yes. But I still agree with you, I wouldn't want to have developers providing proposals for something that they don't even know if they can do.
Correct. And while I agree with you that we could open them and make a decision, I would much rather do it in the reverse. I would much rather figure out where we want it to be, because that almost feels like developers are driving our zoning, as opposed to we are driving the zoning. So I would prefer that we get our ducks in a row with what we want to do and let the, let the, you know, that zoning concern or change or issues flesh itself out and then let the developers know where we stand. Because that goes back to the same stance of, is the proposal in line with what we, the town of Irving, would like to see in our town, as opposed to can we match our zoning to meet what the developer wants?
Right, which I don't, I don't think any of us have ever approached it that way, but I understand, I understand the timing aligns to give a different message, I, I got what you're saying.
It implies a different message, and that's not the message that any of us have ever said. So I just want to make sure that we finish out the process of figuring out our stuff first before we bring in outsiders to finish that off.
I just, I just want to throw it out there, there's no reason, Planning Board meets on January 17th, there is no reason why they can't hold a public hearing in February. The February meeting will be the third Thursday of February. I believe, Maria, that would give us enough time for both getting in.
They meet, they meet on the 20th, correct?
Thursday, Thursday of January was our next meeting, and then it was Thursday, Thursday of February. So that, yeah, the 20th, and then the 17th, oh, my glasses on, I can't tell if it's a holiday or not. Nope, okay, the 17th.
Well, we could also ask the Planning Board, try to come up with that recommendation for their next meeting, and then potentially they could hold a meeting sooner too, I mean, if the, the public hearing sooner if needed to meet, if we're trying to hit a timeline. When does, Brian, when does the current RFP due for Pleasant Street?
I think it's January 27th.
It's a week after their meeting.
Right, I was just thinking of our meeting and when. When can, we need to issue the adjusted timeline by when?
Less than even 48 hours, so.
So we could revisit, again, as we could revisit on the 24th, determine if we know a date, are we in a position where we think we're heading to the STM, or is it delayed to the ATM, and then we could issue the new deadline accordingly? I just, I feel like we're just throwing a dart in, in the air right now about what date would be the right one to pick for the Pleasant Street RFP, I guess is all I'm, is all I'm getting.
So you're thinking, discuss it on the 24th, and that would give, that would satisfy if we filed the addendum on the morning of the 25th?
Mm-hmm.
Satisfy the 48 hours.
I just feel you could give us more time to gather details to try to make that change. Maria?
I don't know if, I'm sorry if I missed it too, but there's also the option of including, of issuing an addenda that, that says that we would be open to a friendly 40B, which would, we could still have the zoning discussions at an STM or an ATM, whatever is decided, but it would allow you to move forward with the RFP, which basically is just saying, we're amenable to basically them proposing to break our zoning for that specific project. And I don't, I'm not saying that we necessarily want to do that, but that's another option.
With regards to Pleasant Street...
Not require you to extend the timeline, you would just be issuing an addenda and saying, we're open to a friendly 40B, our, our zoning may or may not change in the next six months. This is where we stand.
And if I'm not mistaken, the senior housing RFP said that, so it's not something the town hasn't done before.
Right, it's not new.
It's not new, and it's not new to Irving, we've, we've offered that as a solution to a project the town felt...
...in situations like this, where they, they might not be able to go through all of the processes for zoning of a particular parcel, but they know what the, what kind of intended use they want for that.
Okay. Good to, good to know. So in terms of the RFP, we'll revisit that on the 24th, we'll put that on our 24th agenda, we'll determine what we're going to do in terms of the Pleasant Street RFP timeline. Back to the proposed zoning changes, anything back to planning, or just wait and see what they come back with for recommendations after their next meeting?
I would like to hear back from them.
I know we illustrated a bunch of things, but I think those are the substance of actions, right? I didn't miss anything in terms of the zoning. The other thing, I'll just say it to identify it, because it's, it's fact of something that we've discussed, Brian and I discussed a little bit. If we do bring all of these in the same meeting, and I voted down, it's two years till you can bring them back, right? For any other change of the same sort. The Planning Board has also done a ton of work on the planned unit development, plans, and they, the two sets of changes are completely unrelated, but they may not appear that way if they're at the same meeting. So we should just be aware that if we bring a zoning change that is not, and this is the opposite of maybe what it sounded like I was saying earlier, that we're not all unanimously feeling that is the right direction for the town, the Planning Board, the Select Board, et cetera, and/or is very controversial to the citizens, it may impact the planned unit development, zoning changes which, you know, have their own separate advantages. And with, you know, I don't want something we're doing necessarily to torpedo all that effort that the Planning Board has spent in time on that. This is a kind of a late-breaking change we're requesting, and I'd hate to cause some negative impact to all the work they did by pulling them in the same meeting if there's a lot of concern about these changes versus those, so. Maybe I'm being overly cautious, but I just don't want to torpedo that work. If that makes sense to you guys?
It does.
Okay. I'm going to call it a wrap on that then, and we'll try to get through a few more things, it's already very late, and so.
Could I just ask for anything more? Could we get a very specific memo as to exactly what you are looking for us to answer? I think that might be useful in the discussion at our meeting. Specific points that you gentlemen addressed this evening that you would like us to look at, I think if you could be as clear as possible, it could be helpful.
Definitely draft something next week?
Yeah, that'd probably be best. I think one of the highlights, obviously, is that we're working on Pleasant Street property, and I know we already talked with the Planning Board once about the fact that it was not in, that it's in VR, and the impact of that, so, that we're looking to make changes that would allow that to proceed as we were hoping, and obviously, the other properties, so. Is there any other key points that you want to have Brian put in that draft memo?
Yeah, so specifically looking at the residential uses and the change to that language, and...
And it's really CV, I mean, both properties are CV, right?
CV and VR.
I'm sorry, yeah, CV and VR, yeah.
Right.
Which, yeah, okay.
And CV, there's, there's no change other than the name from multifamily to multi-unit.
And the cap.
And the cap.
And the cap.
So that was the other piece of, well, I was going to say, on the, on the table, on the residential uses, there's no other change, but in the definition, there's the change of changing it from at least three, not more than four, so, three or four. It's a fair, it's a great, at least three, but not more than four.
3.5 is okay.
3.5 is okay.
A question was raised, if you guys have an idea of what you were thinking of for caps in each district? Did you want no caps? Did you want 50, 75, 20, 13? So that would be helpful if any of you have an idea of what you were thinking of, if you were thinking of a cap, just kind of a ballpark, might be helpful as well.
So I can tell you what my thoughts were on that. I don't have a cap in mind, the idea being that should a developer want to purchase a property that we have and develop it, I would look at what they're proposing... it, I would look at what they're proposing and we would evaluate that in, you know, in relation to any other proposals and see which one best fits the town. So not limiting and saying that, you know, should somebody, limit it to 12. I'm just throwing out a number. And somebody comes in with a 15 unit that has all these other pieces that are amazing, but we can't, you know, and they're saying we have to at least have 15 or we can't, you know, make this work for us and have a few units stymie a project like that. So I think leaving it up to evaluating each and every proposal in the future on its face value and what does that bring to the town and is that a detriment or a benefit? So that's my, that's why I was saying no cap. And not that I want to see somebody come in and let's put in 100 unit high-rise. You know, it's not, I want to be able to evaluate each one and have somebody put together a thought-out plan of this is what we would like to do with the property, should we obtain it? And then we get to evaluate it and say, does that fit the town?
Okay.
I also agree with no cap.
Okay, that's good to know.
I, on the other hand, was thinking VR might lend itself to some sort of cap because I don't think you'd put 50 units, but I'd have to look at the VR map again, so I'll defer to.
I've got to pull it up if you want to look at it.
No, not tonight, but thank you, sir.
He's very large map at home.
Look at that one. I don't need glasses for that one now. I, but I defer to the gentleman on either side of me here. If I feel that way, I have no concerns, so.
Gives you enough to draft something and we can amend it next week.
Yep.
Okay.
And so that's no cap across all zoning districts?
I think, I think, well, hang on, I think what I was proposing the draft says is that what the board was really focused on, although we ended up with special permit in every district, was CV and VR.
Okay, so that's.
I don't believe the board really had concerns or thoughts in any depth about needing or wanting it in the other zones. It was just to make it consistent, special permit everywhere. But I think the focus of our business and our concerns with the development possibilities that the town is considering for properties that we want to dispose of would be in VR and CV.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that aligned with it?
Yeah.
It's not to say that the other parcels may, or zoning may or may not lend itself. I believe that's the Planning Board.
Yeah, the, I don't know how that affects the PUD in the French King.
What do you, can you expand that?
If it's not allowed, so that the, would the, if the PUD were approved, would that supersede a no, nothing over a three or a four?
It would only be for commercial and industrial that.
But not for residential? Yeah. Just wanted to make sure.
I can tell you, the Planning Board was looking at this holistically, so we were looking at all zoning districts because we figured if we're going to make a change, let's make it across the board instead of, you know, keep it there.
Right, yeah.
So that's good to know that your focus is strictly on those two and then we can work from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you for staying. I know it was late in the night and I appreciate you.
I can make Brian stay up nice and late. I don't have a problem.
I see him turning into a pumpkin, but.
Thank you guys for the simple discussion and, you know, about sometimes agreeing, sometimes not.
Of course.
How it should be.
Appreciate you coming and welcome you in to future discussions. Thanks. Okay, back to the top. We, continuing the discussion regarding COVID-19. As I recall, where we left off, we were discussing implementing policy of masks required in-town buildings and in all common spaces and anytime there's more than one person in a private space or a, you know, an office or a vehicle. And then there was a kind of a question mark about the in-between time that we were discussing about air changes and such.
Yeah. I think if we just leave it as when there is two people.
Or common spaces.
Or common space. And then it's common sense that if the person, you know, somebody jumps out of the passenger seat and they still got to drive across town, maybe they keep their mask on. You know, it's not the end of the world if they don't. They're in their vehicle by themselves, but, you know, in such a small, I'm assuming that such a small cab and a vehicle, that UV filter changes that out in a matter of, you know, a couple of minutes. You're talking about a few cubic feet of airspace.
Throw the windows down.
Yeah, you throw a window down.
Hit rearview for a few seconds.
Turn the filter on and by the time you get, you know, a quarter mile down the road, it's all new. So I'm not too worried about that.
So.
I'm thinking Wednesday because although I'd like to implement it tomorrow, I mean.
Do we give everybody time to get the notice? Or do you?
It's like a 24-hour notice.
So make a motion effective January 5th, 2022. Do we want an end date or just until further notice at this point?
You know, the way things are, never-ending changing. Revolve around COVID, I'd go with a whole day.
Can I ask you an amendment to that? Is that no end date, but to be reevaluated? You know, we're going to keep it on our.
Keep it evaluated. It's like until, until further notice.
That's fine, that's fine.
That work?
Yeah, okay.
So effective January 5th, 2022, until further notice, face coverings will be required in all common spaces or anytime where there is more than one person occupying a private office or vehicle.
Second.
In-town buildings.
Thank you. In-town buildings, in-town vehicles. And then you seconded?
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else with regards to COVID-19? At this point? Okay. If I followed the counts, I think we went from 11 to 13 to 23 over the last three full weeks and then had another five today. I think I said four today. I think I said that earlier.
So is that?
And those are new cases each, so.
Right, so that puts our total case count over the last few weeks somewhere around 45, somewhere in there?
For the month of December?
For the month of December and the first few days of.
And it's definitely been climbing. I think the last four or five days were like 3, 4, 5, 5 per day. So over the end of December and into January. Yes, sir?
Could we discuss some extra help for the COVID-19?
Yes, we may. Thank you for reminding me. So one of the other challenges is staffing during these times and should we have a significant snow event? We are potentially shorthanded or could be depending on the state of staff with everything going on. And so we need to come up with a contingency on what do we do because we still have to plow roads and such if we don't have sufficient highway staff who can actively do that at that time, whenever that may be. Hopefully it doesn't occur, but as COVID is ramping up, I think we need to come up with some contingencies. One proposal, I believe you spoke with that gentleman? Okay, thank you. One proposal was potentially have Jim Pollan return on a as-needed basis to assist. He's willing to assist us should we come up against such an event. I believe before he'd also talked about coming in to help cross drain during the snow season anyway. So it was something we never revisited, but it was on the table back when he was retiring. So that's one possibility. Another possibility would be potentially coming up with an outside contractor who could step in in an emergency. That's probably harder and more complicated. So I don't know if we'd be interested in taking any action to allow Jim to return if there's a situation that requires it.
So he'd only be returning for the purpose of snow plowing?
Right. For an event, yeah.
And that's for snow plowing should we not have the capacity to cover internally?
Correct.
Yeah.
Per diem, yeah.
He is still all fully licensed, just as he was when he retired also?
I don't have a problem.
Have to make a decision tonight, but I wanted to present it and whether we either do that or do it next week, but it just.
I don't have a problem with that. I think that's the easiest solution that we could do right now. Should that not work out for whatever reason, we're still, I think it would be wise to look at an alternative just in case because with the number of cases, there's no telling whether or not our one person that we have as a backup is also not available at that time.
Right, right.
Which could very well be. We don't know. So, you know, having, I think doing that now and then looking at what would be the alternative should we not have that person available.
Yeah. So I guess we'll ask you and Glenn and Brian to work on coming up with a contingency, like a contractor or if there's some options out there, someone who would do it. Obviously it'd be an emergency as needed. It wouldn't be contracted services for, you know, a regular ongoing, but what might be out there. This year it might be even harder. I know the state was struggling to fill their contracts, but.
It's still struggling on the.
Yeah, they've got signs.
Well, hopefully we don't have snow.
Yeah, they've got signs up everywhere. They're, they need drivers.
So I don't know that we'll come up with an answer, but, but let's try to look at what's, what's out there. What, if we, if we make that offer, do we need to set a rate? For Jim?
I recommend that we would appoint at the rate he retired at.
He's, like I say, he's as licensed and qualified as he was when he retired. So I think it would be fair to do it as when he retired.
So what would that rate be?
I have it as 26, 21 per hour.
26, 21.
Correct, sorry.
That sounds like a bargain to me.
Well, given the nature, given the nature of the fact that this is a, what I would say is a potential emergent situation to have somebody on board, I have no concerns with that. If we were going to, for the long-term, start creating per diem positions, I might look at that differently, you know, for a long-term cost analysis. But given the fact that, you know, we could have snow on Friday or we could have snow all season and any one, just one person on highway is not available, we're talking.
It makes a big difference.
Add two or three days of plowing in order to get, you know, in public safety to keep roads clear and, you know, it just.
25, 30, 40% of the, of the plowing is gone, yeah.
Yeah. When you only have, what, four plowing and you lose 25% of your plowing capacity, it extends it out quite a bit, so. Yeah, I don't have a concern with the rate.
What do you need for a motion?
To appoint the individual at that rate per diem for snow clearing?
Emergency snow clearing?
Yeah.
No end, no, for the, why don't we just say for the FY '22, snow season or winter season for now, or for, it's snow season for now and then we can revisit for next year? Is that?
Correct.
Just to put a, put some bound on it for now because this isn't something we've really thought through creating?
No, no.
Like you said.
Thought of an emergent, you know.
Right.
Need.
Would one of you like to make a motion?
Sure. And this was Jim that we're talking about?
Jim Pollan.
Yeah, just want to make sure we're talking about the same person. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Jim Pollan as a per diem highway employee at the rate of 26, 21 for the purpose of snow clearing through the end of the snow and winter season in FY '22. Do you need anything else?
Nope.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Extend our thanks to him for being willing to help out as needed.
Absolutely.
Yes. Did that cover, Brian? Was there anything else under COVID? That was it, right? Okay. I know we are well beyond our normal time of trying to wrap up, so we'll try and go quickly through some of these and if we need to table some to next week, we will. Okay? Discussion regarding July 18th, 2021, state of emergency, no updates at this time. Library construction project update, review of change order request, no update at this time.
Not yet.
Discussion regarding traffic control in Irving Center impacted by the Church Street Bridge, no updates at this time. Art Street forced sewer main change order request, no update, no update, right?
I should, I should have something hopefully for your next meeting.
Okay.
I just need to, the holiday slowed that conversation down.
Okay. Review of surplus property request, assessors and IT, third read. I did provide an amended request. The count slightly shifted on the number of printers and which kind they were. Same with computers. It was like two Acer, two Dell. It's actually three Dell, one Acer. I don't believe those were necessarily material, but I leave it to both of you if you wish to carry it for a couple more meetings or not. It was just an increase in the count of printers.
Yeah, I don't see.
No, I'm looking at your.
The detail there, yeah.
The revised, it just adds a couple. I don't have any concern with what was added to it.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
Motion to declare the items listed on the request dated 11/15/2021, amended 1, 2, 22, surplus.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything anyone would like to add on the review of the former International Paper Mill RFP draft? We'll just carry that to next week.
Yeah, I think we talked about that one enough tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Before you pass on that, Maria spent a lot of work trying to incorporate a lot of the revisions. It was not a small task and I know it still needs more revision, but I just want to acknowledge that work.
Thank you and I don't, none of us mean to undermine that by not diving in more tonight.
Yeah.
Could I offer one comment on this?
Yes.
So I was able to update the rubric, but not adjust the, like developer, I forget what we call it, like the developer requirements or something. So one thing I'm working on this week is reconciling those for, so for your next meeting, those should match better. So if you're looking at it and you're like, these don't speak to each other, that's why.
Okay. Thank you. Wrapping up review of the draft, special town meeting warrant. Anything that we have concerned beyond what we've already discussed with FinCom or planning? With the articles? We're going to draft a new one for increasing cemetery expenses and beyond that. Just pending zoning.
The two zoning.
And setting, affirming up a date.
And the rest is confirmed.
Okay. Review of the 2022 liquor license for the Crooked Tap Cafe, West Main Street. There's a memo on our packet after our discussion at the license renewal, at a discussion with the property owner and they understood the concern about not continuing to be an active business and carrying a liquor license. And so they have respectively, respectfully rescinded their request for a renewal of their liquor license. And so I believe, Brian, your request was to have us discontinue that effective now rather than waiting until it expires with our extension.
Correct.
Make a motion that we revoke? I guess it's revoke, rescind, revoke. Sounds harsh, but okay. Make a motion, we revoke the 2022 liquor license for the Crooked Tap Cafe, West Main Street that was good through February 4th, February 2022.
2020.
Yeah, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion regarding Amaraescu request for alternative on-bill credit agreement and professional owners' agent services through Beacon Integrated Solutions.
Carry that to next week.
Passover for next week. Meeting minutes from December 29th, 2021. Make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Issuance of the 11th and 12th water commitments for FY '22.
Motion to approve the 11th water commitment in the amount of $440.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And a motion to approve the 12th water commitment in the amount of $54.82.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review and acceptance of the First Light Grant Award for Public Art Installation. Review and acceptance of the First Light Grant Award for Public Art Installation. Mariah, come on up.
Is there a reason that there's root one? Or is that the root of the water?
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure I got that right. Because we have, we have different pathways.
They can. Yeah. Was there an issue?
Nope.
Okay. Nope.
Just checking.
Laying it on him for clarification on something.
Just making sure before we move on.
Nope, all set.
Mariah, the floor is yours.
So in November, I was being aware of First Light Municipal Grant, First Light Municipal Grant Program, which their goal is to assist with projects that aim to decrease the impact of climate change and improve the overall quality of life and health of towns. Brian and I just got the grant and we didn't have anything on our current project list that matched that requirement, but we had spoken extensively over the past two years about Irving's lack of public art. And so we figured, why not try for a public art grant? And so we put in our application and we were awarded the funding. The proposal that I put in was for a sculpture which would be installed in Riverfront Park. The Recreation Commission has approved that concept. And so with your approval to move forward, we could have $10,000 to put towards the advertising, public engagement, installation costs and pay an artist to design, fabricate and install a piece of sculpture art. The outline I had for the goals of our sculpture were to incorporate repurposed, reclaimed or found materials, accentuate the beauty of the natural assets Irving has to offer, attract tourists and residents of all ages, provoke reflection on climate change, ecological and interpersonal resilience, and appreciating the natural resources that Franklin County has to offer and keeping in mind that there needs to be minimal maintenance required out of respect for our ground staff's workload.
So my question is, what is the process we're going to use to find someone to do this work?
So that's up to you all. I would, it would be less than $10,000 that we would be paying an artist to do this. So its best business practices is the procurement process, which means we get quotes. I would suggest that we release a call for artists, which is, if you imagine a very, very, very simplified version of an RFP and without the formal process that goes with that, it's basically you release like a one or two-page document outlining what work you want and what the proposal requirements are. Usually you give it a few weeks timeline. Artists would submit concept art, so a diagram and a narrative explaining what their idea is. And then either you all or you would task me with it or a committee to review those. If you wanted a public input process, we could figure that out online somehow, get public input and then pick a designer and move forward working with them.
I think some of the goals that you illustrated would be part of that document of what, what are we looking for, right? That we're looking for something that kind of fits into these, these design, these criteria, right? I think you were, the proposal was to have a unofficial, that looks pretty official, committee to, to kind of review and.
Yeah, and that's just an idea. I think we could do it any way you all saw fit. Whether you wanted an official committee or you wanted it to just be me, you know, I think there's a variety of options you have.
I have no concern with the five-person committee that you were talking about. I think it's, you know, keeps you, you're the one that wrote the grant, keeps you there at the table. And it makes perfect sense based on the location and the desire, you know, the desire of a certain style of art and what we wanted to reflect, to have cultural recreation, an artist and a resident. I thought it was well thought out. I would have no problem standing behind that and putting that out there to the residents and those boards to fill those seats. As far as going forward after that, I would even say that, that as long as there's parameters about what we're looking for, put out the request for artists and pick one and bring it to finalization. I don't even have a problem with that.
Oh, yeah, like run with it to fruition?
Through fruition.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either. I just thought the record would like to make one comment. I would not want to see anything that was a painted picture.
Oh, yeah. I think you mean like a flat kind of?
Yeah.
Okay.
One-dimensional.
One is at the French King Bridge.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean.
I wouldn't want to see anything like that. I looked at that one for too many years already.
You'll want to see something with some dimension and pizzazz. Got it.
More of sculpture or three-dimensional art?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Fair enough.
I can see that. I don't think we have much of that at all. We have some. I mean, like I think a riverfront and even the displays that are there about what's in the park and around the park are still two-dimensional. They're very nice, but again, we have a lot of that, it's not.
Yeah. Some of the artists that I have been researching in terms of when I'm trying to, you know, if we choose to go forward and release this call for artists, who we're going to send that out to, I've been trying to research who has done other sculptures in nearby communities and things like that. And some of them are also functional art, so like it's an interesting bench that you can then sit on or something like that, or like a really cool bike rack or something that's not only a piece of sculpture art, but also serves a function.
Yeah. I think if you're, yeah, if you're going on any theme like that, that's not boring.
Some pizzazz.
We're going to be on board.
Yeah, yeah. So I think especially because we don't know long-term, unofficial's fine unless there's a need for it to be official, but I'm fine with it as well, what you have proposed. I think the goals all make sense. I would hope we have an Irving artist who's interested, but if not, I'd just say another resident to help.
Would it be cleaner to? I was going to say, would it be cleaner to just make a motion to authorize Assistant Town Planner Mariah Kurtz to complete the grant process through fruition? As she see fit?
As she sees fit. I was going there too, so. No, 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 I don't mind you doing it at all.
So there's a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion and I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I know, I'm looking for you. No, 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 I'm just, I'm looking at you like to call the vote. I didn't mean that. I'm getting tired. Obviously if you have questions or concerns as you get through it, bring them to us. You know, we're always here, but otherwise run with it.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. I'm excited for it.
Thanks for all the work in getting this, too. It's great. This, not to minimize it, but ends up falling low on the list of things that we have to deal with. Do things that are art and, you know, bring, bring more culture and things like that to our community, so it's nice that you were able to take the time, so. Moving on to another grant. Review and acceptance of the FY '22 Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Award.
This is a grant that we've been awarded for $13,000. And this would be to work with FERCOG to do an assessment of all of our current town-owned public spaces for how accessible they are in accordance with the ADA requirements and then creating a prioritization plan of if there, if there are issues, what we do to address those in the future.
Again, another great thing to work on. It kind of aligns really well with our complete streets, with our sidewalk projects, with our, you know, all the other things we've been doing. I have no concerns. You know, anything they say about Town Hall or some of the buildings that we already have on the docket to review more holistically down the road, we may not take action right away, but we'll see what they are. I think it's great.
Yeah, I also will take it one step further. I also think that it's fantastic that it's not just building access and that it's programmed. What we offer for programming within the town and does that also meet? So that's, I was happy to see that.
That's a good point.
So I assume along with this grant, you'll be looking for future grants to assist in in whatever those recommendations are?
Yeah, so that opens up doors. Once you have this like prioritization plan completed, then you can apply for funds. Oftentimes if you're applying for funds for even like a construction project, they'll ask you, well, have you completed your ADA plan? Because they want to make sure that that's on your radar.
Good job.
Thank you.
And then the, the FERCOG would be working, doing this and then obviously I'm assuming you and other town departments will be assisting.
Correct. There might be interviews with department heads and things like that.
How much are we paying you?
Not enough.
It feels like there's a grant every week. I just forgot to say, it's great. Sorry, Brian, but there's a little lot more to summarize, but.
That's really true.
So you're going to need a motion to accept and authorize, are you going to be it? Even Mariah's listed?
But you're going to be the executor, is that right?
I think I'm the signatory, but Mariah's designated as the contract manager.
Okay. Where did I go? Too many pages. Make a motion that we accept the FY '22 Municipal ADA Improvement Grant for $13,000 and authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute the contract and Mariah Kurtz to Assistant Town Planner to be the contract manager. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Do you need another one for the FERCOG?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a separate contract.
To actually then engage them for that? Trying to find that page.
Yeah, I got it. So I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement between the Town of Irving and the Franklin Regional Council of Governments to execute the American with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan for Irving, Mass. 12, 1. With the amount of services of $12,910.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Really start looking at that summary. I'm thinking of this pie chart of all the grant money, it's going to be pretty big for the last couple of years. I believe that wraps the agenda items unless I missed something. It wrapped to the second page, so I got to double check here, but appreciate everyone sticking with us for a long night. Unless there's anything else, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 10:55 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.